Good evening and welcome. Thank you for being here. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board and Funding Acquorum. I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner with current state regulations and is being recorded perfectly timed. I will take attendance for the record. When I call your name, please signify by saying aye. Paul Alpert?
Here.
Artie Crocker?
Here.
Natasha Spata?
Here.
Jean McKnight?
Here.
And obviously, the Chair is here. All are present, so that means we can do voice call votes, which is great. Now, all materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, including our agenda. That's at needhamma.gov. The first item on our agenda is the public hearing for the Farmers Market. Do we have Jeff?
Yes, he's there.
Okay, very good. So if we can bring him over. The first item on our agenda this evening is the public hearing for an amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 2022-01 with Needham Farmers Market, Inc. as petitioner in respect of the property located at Greensfield on Great Plain Avenue to permit the Farmers Market to operate on Greensfield again on Sundays for another season while the improvements at the Town Common settle. May I have a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing, please?
Second.
We have a motion discussion. We've motioned as second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing no opposition. The motion carries. With us this evening is the President of the Needham Farmers Market, Jeff Friedman. Jeff, we don't see you, and you are muted. If you could unmute, and hopefully we can see you, that would be dynamite. I'm not sure if there's anyone else with us from the Farmers Market tonight or not. Jeff, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. Well, you don't have to see me, I guess. No problem there. Listen, my name's Jeff Freeman, President of Needham Farmers Market. We've applied for a special permit to operate again on Greensfield for 2023, same as last year. Park and Recreation Commission and the Town Manager approved this location under the license agreement for 2023. The application includes a market layout, which is basically the same as in 2022. Adam, as you mentioned, return to the common is not possible, as the town is still involved in renovation, including landscaping, and we have been so informed. The market's use is the same as it was in 2022, although the term is slightly changed for, you know, succeeding year, June 11th to November 19th. The same hours of operation, the same limits on the number of vendors. We did make one change. Live music will start 30 minutes later at 11:30 a.m., as requested by the Christian Science Church. The market requested the use of Greensfield for 2024 also. The Park and Recreation Commission stated, quote, "At the end of the '23 season, they would like to reassess before deciding on the 2024 season." Our vendors and Needham customers agree that Greensfield is the best location. So we would like that the board include this as an option if the, for 2024, if there's a license agreement, agreement by the Park and Recreation Director and by the Town Manager. The market also requests that the application fee be waived. Thank you. I'm going to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Just before we go into any questions, I'll read out for the record that we've received a letter from the Farmers Market dated February 17 with exhibits, including those mentioned, in addition to others from the market's president, an email dated March 6 from the police chief with no issue, an email dated March 5 from the fire chief, again, no issues, he's okay, an email dated March 21 from Stacy Mulroy, our Director of Parks and Rec. She said the plan looks good, an email dated March 21 from the Assistant Public Health Director Tara Gurg. Jeff, have you seen that email dated March 21 from Tara Gurg? And are you okay with all six of her conditions? And do you accept those?
Yes, I would. I am. My understanding, well, Paula Jacobson, who's the Executive Director of the YMCA emailed... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to come to that.
Yes, this is my answer to your question.
Good, thank you very much. And then the letter dated March 23 from our Town Engineer, no objection, no comment, an email dated March 19 from the Board of the First Church of Christ Scientists requesting that live music start on or after 11:30 to avoid disruption of worship services. And I acknowledge and affirm for the record that you've acknowledged to do that. That's very good. We have an email from Jeff confirming that dated March 21 that he'll make sure that the music starts at or after 11:30. And finally, we have a letter from the Y dated March 23 agreeing to public access to restrooms off Greenfield, which was one of the conditions and requirements from the Department of Health. And we acknowledge that they're making access, so that satisfies that condition. And those were the items we have in our record. As far as I'm concerned, I think this is a good project. I would take a motion when we get there to waive the application fee. I would also support extending this for a two-year term in the event that's required, provided that the license agreement and the other documents are in place as required. Artie, do you have any comments on this or questions?
No, no, no. I mean, I think it's, Jeff, I mean, I think it's great that you guys are back. I think this wound up being a wonderful spot, far better than certainly the Garrity Way as for the Farmers Market. What I might, not question per se, what might be interesting, Jeff, is if the town allowed you to be on the actual common for the Farmers Market, would that be a place that you would entertain? Again, we're talking 2024 now, that's all.
Yes. Our preference, we've had the board had a meeting on this, the location. Our preference is definitely Greensfield. It's a superior location. It's the desire of our Needham customers as well as the vendors. And we found that it's the, in terms of the configuration of the walkways that were located on at Greensfield, the market, the vendors, there's room to expand, there's room for our vendors, our artists, and it's very cohesive, it's very friendly, family-friendly, and there are a lot of positive aspects to this in terms of the local businesses, the housing that's close to the location, and we think that it's best for the community, frankly.
Yeah, no, thanks, Jeff. No, I was just curious if I chance you guys had entertained when the Town Common comes back and when the, you know, when the grass is taken, if next year, if the Select Board allowed you to be on the grass section of the Town Common, would you entertain that? It's not important for this year, of course, but I'm curious if you guys have thought about if they were supposed to be allowed.
Well, I mean, obviously, anything that the Select Board says, we would take very seriously. But we think that, as I said before, that we believe that it's a community desire from our customers at least, that we would locate at Greensfield again. But, you know, this is a matter for...
Yeah, no, 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 thanks, Jeff. I didn't, yeah, I was just curious, Jeff, for what was happening. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. It's a good question.
Natasha, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Jean, do you have any comments or questions?
Just seeking a clarification. Stacy Mulroy, Park and Recreation, according to Jeff Freeman's letter, they voted to extend the market for the 2023 season. At the end of the 2023 season, they would like to reassess before deciding on the 2024 season. Now, Mr. Chair, you said something about supporting an extension for the two years. So if we were to do that, we could do that subject to this being approved by Park and Rec.
That's right.
Yep. Okay, then that was my only question. It looks like everybody else, so we wanted to get a response from. We did get a response from... Oh, the other thing is, there's only one letter regarding the use of the bathrooms, and the condition would be that they get three letters, correct?
I, no, I don't think so. They just needed to access, the Department of Health wanted to make sure that the Y would provide access for the bathrooms.
Well, they requested, the Department of Health requested Walgreens, Bagels Best, and one other location.
That's what they had last year.
Right, and we only have one.
Can I clarify something, please?
Yes, please.
So I think that the intent here was that if one of the three, or all of the three, but at least one of the three would provide the facilities available to our customers, the vendors and our customers, that would be sufficient. It's not a situation where they all three or all of them have to agree, and if all three don't agree, then that's denial of what Tara Gurg wants. If one of the three agrees, particularly the most important would obviously be the YMCA, since it's contiguous, it's adjacent to Greensfield. So I think that's the only way, my understanding in dealing with Tara is that if one of the three or two of the three don't agree, you know, that's not to prohibit the compliance by at least making the YMCA restroom facilities available.
Jeff, did you have all three last year?
I'm not sure we had Walgreens.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm looking at the memo from Tara Gurg.
Yes.
And the memo from Tara Gurg says, "The Health Division needs to receive an updated chair restroom agreement in writing that is signed and dated from Walgreens, YMCA, and Bagels Best, similar to last year. The signed dated agreements, plural, must state that the establishment will allow restroom access to the public during all hours, that the Needham Farmers Market is open to the public, et cetera."
Hey, Jeff, do you remember, did you get all three agreements last year?
We, I know we had, obviously, the Y, and we had, we had also Bagels Best. I'm not sure about Walgreens. In the past, we've had Walgreens. But although, if you're, if you read that literally, it's inconsistent with Tara Gurg's, my understanding of what her intent was, that at least if one of those, most importantly, it would be the YMCA, since it's adjacent, directly adjacent to Greensfield, and at least if the YMCA agreed, that would be satisfactory. I think that's the...
Jeff, that's not the memo that says it, but Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, okay, I'm looking at our draft decision.
Yes.
I do not see anything in our draft decision that deals specifically with the issue of restrooms. It only deals with stating that the Farmers Market will comply with all of the requirements of the town agencies. And so I say we just vote it the way it is, and it's up to the Board of Health. They have to comply with whatever the Board of Health requirements are. If the Board of Health requires three restrooms, or two out of three restrooms, or one restroom, so be it, let the Farmers Market deal with the Board of Health, you can comply with the Board of Health requirements.
That's the solution?
I'm good with that.
And that's where I am from that.
I'm good with that, Paul.
And if I may continue?
Yes, please.
Since you had me last, I am totally against doing anything formally with regard to 2024.
Understood.
It's not the board's prerogative, okay? They come to us after they've made their agreement with the Town Manager, and whether they can have Greensfield is, to some extent, and probably to a large extent, up to Park and Rec. And so what we have, all we have in front of us is a license agreement that deals with 2023. If the town is fine with Greensfield next year, I'm fine with Greensfield next year. I'm fine with the common next year. But I don't think it's our place this year to say, "We support Greensfield for next year," where it's really the Town Manager's decision.
And Parks, I'm sure that's, I agree, I accept that, that's absolutely reasonable. So do we have any comments from the public? Any hands up? Anyone here in the room would like to speak? We have a woman here. If you could come to the table, please, and state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful.
My name is Ann Watson. Yeah. And I'm a resident, and I find it very interesting that a lot of effort is being put into making sure that things work out on Greensfield. However, as a resident who lives right there, I would like some attention paid to the people who actually live here. And I think that there's a lot of very commendable activities that are being proposed and was used last year, but being a resident right there, I mean, right there.
How do you state your address?
Oh, 101 Warren Street.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I really am there. Okay.
And you're on that side of Warren Street.
Yes, so I'm outside of, and, you know, I think that having the Farmers Market there is a great asset, and, you know, but as a resident, having large acoustical music, literally, I had to leave my house last year because of the music that was played right above my, right there. And I have, you know, my husband and I, who couldn't make it tonight, and another resident was unable to come. It's, it's, it's supposed to be a Farmers Market, and I think that if you want to have music, that's one thing, but to have acoustical music that is blasting in your driveway and in your, you know, we literally had to leave the house.
Was that true, everyone? Or just unsaid?
No, there was one in particular that was worse than the others, and I actually went outside to speak to her, and I don't want to say, I mean, she was excited about what she was doing, and she was not very, you know, willing to either tone down the music or anything. And when that is your home, and that is where you have lived for almost 40 years, and now you have to leave your house because of all this noise, you know, and it didn't have anything to do with actually a Farmers Market.
It was the music element.
It was the music, and it was the acoustical music.
I think of acoustical as being non-electric. It sounds like...
Oh, well, maybe I'm saying it wrong.
You mean there was a speaker and the volume was excessive?
Well, it was also just electronic. It was all electronic.
Yes.
Excuse?
Yes.
The permit for last year, it reads on that issue this way, Section, Condition 115, or maybe it's a finding 115, in last year's, and I was looking for the same initials, but I couldn't find it. Yeah, this is under findings and conclusions. The Needham Farmers Market proposes to have free musical entertainment from individuals or small groups at the Farmers Market, such as flute, fiddle, or guitar players. Amplification, if any, would be limited, and noise will not extend beyond the site. It seems as though the way to address this is to simply prohibit any amplification.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that would make, you know...
What do we have in that current decision? I'm just not finding it.
Well, right here, it says that to use Greensfield for...
You're looking at the notice, so that's what they're requesting.
Notice, yeah.
What provision was that? What article from last year?
It was 1.15, but I'm not finding it yet in this proposed decision.
No, but we probably have...
Oh, it says, "Has proposed to operate under the exact conditions as previously approved." So, but those are conditions.
Jean, can I say something?
Yes, please.
So basically, I think this is covered under Section 311 of the decision.
311 of the proposed decision.
It was in the original decision under Section 311, and now we're actually proposing, I think, a change to that section to limit the time that the entertainment could begin. So, in the new decision, it's under, it's Section 3.4.
Okay, but it's not the timing, it's the...
Volume.
Volume, yeah.
Well, I think in the original one, we, as it was done originally and as it's drafted now, amplification was allowed. So you would need to basically revise this paragraph to disallow amplification.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, first of all, I wanted to mention, say to Ann Watson that I'm very sorry that this occurred, and I'm not aware that, you know, that any complaint was made. May I ask, did you speak to anybody at the Farmers Market, particularly the market manager, about this issue?
Not a manager. I actually, I went, I asked them, first of all, what was kind of going on, and then I know I spoke with someone who was part of the music, and I asked them something of, I can't, I think I was so upset, and then I had to leave.
Okay, Jeff. My question, my question is, did you ask for anybody in charge of the supervision of the market? The reason, the reason I say that is because had we known, had the market manager known about this, he would have immediately taken steps, and we've always been very sensitive to the community in terms of whether or not, you know, the volume is too high. Had we known about it, had you contacted the market, particularly the market manager at the time, he would have definitely taken steps to make sure that the volume was turned down.
Well, okay, and maybe what I'm trying to do now is to prevent what happened last year and prevent it from happening now, you know, this upcoming year.
Jeff, can you speak to last year, whether the music was amplified every week, or whether it was just some weeks, or what the story is with the use of the amplification as opposed to just having...
Acoustical.
Some weeks. Some weeks. So, you know, sometimes it was a single individual playing, like the guitar, and sometimes it was a small group. I can tell you that I'm sorry that it happened, and we'll definitely make sure that it doesn't happen again. If this is brought to our attention, we would take action, and that's the purpose of the market manager, is to, if he hears any kind of complaint, to take action upon it.
Jeff, does the, Jeff, does the market manager wear a T-shirt that says Market Manager? How would someone know who the market manager is?
If anybody asks the vendor, any of the vendors, I want to speak to, I want to speak to somebody in charge.
Jeff, do you have different market managers, different weeks, or is it one or two people who are...
No, it's Fuvvo. He's, he's our market manager, he's there all the time, and he knows that there's a problem.
But he's not visible and known as manager, Jeff. What's the problem?
There is a market manager, there's a market tent.
Correct, Jeff?
That is correct. In the center of the market, there's like a two walkways.
Essentially, a market manager tent, yeah. And obviously, the person isn't always going to be there, but there's usually someone there.
Let me, let me speak on this, if I may.
Please.
We could put in a condition that there will be no amplification.
Yes.
That would be great. That would really correct.
And it would just be acoustic.
There is a problem with that.
Or we could leave it the way it is, which, the way it is, it says, "Amplification, if any, shall be limited, and no noise shall extend beyond Greensfield." So if it's extending it to your house, then in violation of the condition as it's worded now. But it means that you have to complain. So you have to go to the market manager, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully they comply for you. And then it says, "In the event of any complaint regarding the noise, the volume, or the amplification, the Planning Board retains jurisdiction," which, that's a timing problem. If you're having a Sunday where you're having a problem in your house...
We're not meeting for two weeks.
We're not meeting for two weeks, or it's the summertime, so, you know...
Right, maybe a month, yeah.
You know, and then our office is closed, it's Sunday, so you can't call the Planning Board until Monday morning. So...
I mean, I would just...
You know, do we want to, do we want to put in a condition that there won't be amplification at all?
I've...
Or do we want to trust that it won't be, now that we've had a complaint, Jeff and his people will make sure that there, that there isn't a problem?
I'm of two minds here. The special permit is drafted in such a way to be sensitive to this, but we've had an experience, although we had a system in place last year, it failed you. And as Paul just mentioned, on a weekend when Planning Board members aren't meeting, and it's impossible to reach someone, your ability for an accommodation is limited. And we've seen by experience, unfortunately, Jeff, that it's, you know, the experience wasn't good, and the outcome was the exact opposite of what's happening, if you have to leave your own house, whether on one occasion or multiple occasions, that's absolutely unsatisfactory. I do think at the same time that having a reasonable volume level can kind of attract people to this space, which is part of the intent of the thing, but there's a difference between attracting people to come to the event and to make note of the event, and for your peaceful, quiet enjoyment of your own private property. So I am very sympathetic to this particular case. I would support either, and I don't know if we could do, like, a volume no greater than level two, but who knows that level two is loud enough? So I think...
Yeah, it can be very subjective.
Adam, 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 can I speak?
Yes.
This is, our Farmers Market has been in operation for 11 years, 11 years. We've been on the front lawn of First Parish Church for two years. We were in the parking lot next to Needham Bank for about three years, and there are some living court places near there, and restaurants, businesses. We were in on the Town Common, Garrity's Way, for about five years. In that period of time, I don't remember anybody complaining about the sound.
Wait a minute.
Well, that's huge.
You're talking about, you're talking about commercial areas. You're talking about commercial areas, you're not around homes...
Exactly.
...in all of those areas except for last year on Greensfield.
That's right.
No, actually, too, when they were at the Needham Bank parking lot, residences are right there.
Across the street. Across the street.
They're right there across the street. Yes, so there was some proximity to residences there.
And you had amplified music all those years?
Yes, yes, they did.
So, we have one complaint now, we have, I'm not saying, I apologize to Ann Watson, I'm sorry it occurred, but to my knowledge, in 11 years, this is the first time we had a complaint. You know, even if it's, you know, a complaint could go to the town manager's office, of course, you know, you don't have to necessarily go to the planning board, and the town manager would certainly hear Ann's complaint or anybody's complaint. All right, so we made a mistake, somebody made a mistake, and we apologized for it. And I, my suggestion to the board would be to put language in that, you know, if there's an issue from a resident such as Ann, that, you know, the planning board should take some kind of action if it can't be resolved.
Jeff, with all due respect, the challenge, we've already walked through the challenge with that solution, because Ann then is required to find a miracle of local town government open on a weekend, and, you know, for any kind of immediate redress, when she's already tried the reasonable thing of finding someone, speaking to the musician directly as the source, and that person's not able to, you know, to make a reasonable accommodation. And I do think that there is a difference between being a resident, having a bedroom that's, you know, that's 15 feet over the thing, as opposed to, you know, 150 feet or 300 feet away on, when it was on, at Needham, on Garden, I think, when it was on the Needham Bank property. So I, we already have that solution, the problem with that solution is that it, as a pragmatic manner, it's just, it's impossible to solve and to provide immediate relief. So, Jean.
Adam, can I say something?
Jean's going to speak first, Jeff.
I just want to understand something. I know, Jeff, you spoke earlier about how the vendors really like Greensfield, and it made me think, is it not your intention to go back to the town hall as soon as that site is available for you?
Yes, clearly, they prefer Greensfield.
That would be, that would be a decision, that would be, that would be a decision.
I'm trying to listen to Jeff's response.
Jeff, say, Ann, please.
That would be a decision of the town manager's office, and a decision of the Park and Recreation Commission, or the director of Park and Rec.
I'm asking about your own preference.
Our preference would be to be Greensfield, yes.
Okay, okay, I understand that now, because my thought had been, well, if, when I go back to the town hall steps, then certainly they can have acoustic music. I have enjoyed that myself, I have enjoyed dancing to the music. But at Greensfield, it's a different place. I propose that in, when we get to approving this decision, that section 311 say, free acoustic musical entertainment from individuals or small groups at the market such as flute, fiddle, or guitar players may be utilized. Any required permits in the board of selectmen shall be obtained. Delete and do not have amplification, if any, shall be limited, and no noise shall extend beyond Greensfield.
Except, if I may.
I would say, I would say amplification is not allowed.
And further.
There's a problem with this, though. I mean, there's a problem with this. No, no, we're getting, we're going down, we're going down the road with eliminating that. There's a problem with that. Because, I mean, Ann, I can appreciate this, I really do, because I've been at farmer's market a number of times, when I think the music is too loud when I'm at the market, and obviously, I'm close to it, but I've been thinking it was too loud then, and I've chose not to say anything, I could have, I chose to let it, let alone, because I can walk away, of course, there's a difference, because I'm not living next to it. But the problem is, when you have music, someone's playing a flute, someone's playing an acoustic guitar, someone's playing something that's not necessarily going to be very loud at times, it is impossible to have that music occur without some type of amplification. Now, I can appreciate, I mean, I wish I could say something like, you know, 60, it can't be above 60 decibels from, you know, 50 feet, 50, 100 feet, no, no, I understand that. I said, I'm wishing I could. The problem is, I don't know what level it would have to be to satisfactorily. Yeah, what's that?
Or not a test it.
Yeah, well, no, you can test, I mean, you have sound meters. No, there are sound meters to test it.
So somebody's going to show up every Sunday with a meter?
Yeah, yeah, no, of course not. And the fact is that, where it says not to leave the property or something like that, while we know sound is always going to leave the property to some extent, leave it in there, we don't have a decimal meter, fine, but it is, it does not seem practical or right for the town to eliminate, I'm sorry, Ann, I wish I could go along with this, to eliminate the amplification. It does not seem right, because farmer's markets are wonderful things for the towns. It is a wonderful venue to have, the musicians to have an ability to play somewhere, and to just eliminate that amplification doesn't make sense.
Okay, two things here. One, I'm a resident, and I pay taxes, okay? And I'm not sure, I, you know, I don't want to get unpleasant about this, but, you know.
But there's no need to.
Oh, yeah, there's.
She's leaving her house.
No, no, there's no, there's no need, no, what I'm saying is, there's no need to, because, here's a couple of things. I'm not saying it will never happen again, what I'm saying is, Jeff is hearing about it, we're hearing about it, you've told us what's been going on, there is a market manager there, and they absolutely will do something about it, if for some reason, there's a group there that's too loud, they will, they will make sure it's turned down. I know that, I know they will.
So your comment is heard, I understand that, let's.
Let me go on then, with another thought.
We'll come back to you.
So if we leave the language as it is, which I think, you know, if we're going to allow amplification, and I understand Artie's point, you know, you may not have a guitar plugged into an amplifier, but you may have a microphone, that, you know, the flute player or the guitarist is playing into a microphone, so that people can hear.
Or they're singing, even, or even they're singing.
If it's too loud, and unfortunately, it may get too loud, if you can, go to the market, find the manager, and Jeff is saying that there's a particular manager there, so maybe we can find out who it is and get you a picture, so you know who you're looking for. And if you're not satisfied with that person being able to get the music lowered, you call up the planning board, the planning director, or our assistant planning director on Monday, and you complain, and we authorize our staff to enforce this, and say, and say to Jeff, you know, Jeff, either tone it down, or we're going to pull the plug and not allow you to have music, period, because.
Let me ask a question, Jeff. Do you have a sign?
Can I ask?
Jeff, do you have a sign? Yes.
With reference to what Paul was saying, rather than pull the plug on the music, why not just pull the plug on the amplification?
Whatever.
That's what he's, that's what he's intending. Jeff, do you have a sign that's posted as soon as you set up, that remains up at all times until you strike down, until after 3:00, when you strike the thing down, that says, you know, market manager name and phone number, you know, and your name and phone number for any immediate inquiries, please call Jeff, for instance? Do you have any kind of notice like that posted?
I think you have to have the sign that says, the cell phone number of the person who's there.
No, we have, okay, we have, first of all, we have a market manager's tent in the center of the market, a big banner, market manager, Needham Farmers Market. The market manager, of course, has my telephone number to call if there's any problem. I want to mention that we have a policy that, of, that's exactly what Ann is talking about. I don't know what went wrong, and I apologize to her, but I can assure you that it won't occur again. But let me just tell you what our policy is.
That's the right answer.
We have an online sign up for musicians. In that sign up, it says, it talks about, you know, that sound will not, you know, be allowed, that it'll be, you know, limited to the area of the market. We have also, when the musicians come, the market manager talks to the musicians and tells them, you know, that the music has to be local, right within the area of the farmer's market. That's the way it always has been. We also have a policy that if the musicians play loud, the market manager is going to send them home.
Jeff, that policy's great, but it failed.
We don't pay these people any money.
Jeff, that policy's great, except when it doesn't work, and that's the problem. So I'd like to go to Larry Cohen on Zoom, who has his hand up, and then, Ann, we'll come back to you, because I know you wanted to say something else. Go ahead, if we could bring Larry Cohen over. And Larry, if you could say your name and address for the record, please, that would be helpful. And while we're there, while we're waiting for Larry to come over, I've been to plenty venues where you have a guitar player and a singer, and there's no, when you have a microphone, and you're plugged in, you're plugged into an amplifier to amplify the sound. There are plenty of venues where people indoors and out, where people are, you know, where people are singing and playing an instrument, and you can still hear it, that's the whole point, without the amplification, that the radius is much smaller for the sound trouble.
When you're inside, I appreciate that. When you're inside, it's a lot easier to have, you know, not have it amplified, although it normally is anyway, surprisingly, sometimes. But when you're outside, noise, especially with a lot of people, noise, sometimes it just dies. And so to have no amplification is very difficult, very difficult.
Well, we can also do, while we're waiting for Larry to come over, the other thing is, we could, oh, perfect.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Larry, you're muted.
We could try it the opposite way, try it, Artie, with no amplification, and if that's a problem, as opposed to starting first, but I'm not done with Ann yet. So Larry, you're muted, and we can't see you, if you could turn on your camera and turn on your microphone, and state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful. We see, while we're waiting for Larry, Ann, why don't you go ahead?
Well, I guess, you know, this was not, would not be my first choice, but why does this extended music abilities, why does it have to be right next to all the people that live there? Why can't it?
It's the location.
It's not, it's on Greensfield, I mean, I meant to print the, actually, I did print it, I forgot to bring with me, you know, this shows you where the music is.
It's supposed to have it, right? It's shown on the plan.
So, I think it's a valid point, that question.
So the music is here, in the middle of the market, and you've got the YMCA between the music and Warren Street. So it is a distance, it's a question of keeping, of keeping the volume down. Music, the music stand is not right at Warren Street.
Okay, because last.
Can I add something also, just to help Paul's explanation, if I could actually include something about this relevant to the music and where they're located? So any amplification, the speakers would be in the direction of Great Plain Avenue, not Warren Street. I don't know what happened, why it occurred, and I apologize to Ann, and I'll make sure that it doesn't happen again. This is the first complaint that I'm aware of in 11 years.
Well, that's because in 11 years, you did not have all this loud music right there, you know.
Different location.
It was a different location.
You also with this, Ann?
Well, I'm not real, I'm sorry, where exactly?
Here's the YMCA building.
Okay.
Okay, this is Great Plain Avenue.
Right.
This is Pickering Street.
Okay, and so this is, if I have this correctly, then last year, it was right up against here, is that right, or?
Well, this is basically the same map as last year, so it should have been.
Yeah, Paul, I remember, I remember in years past, it's remembering it further down, closer to the Y. At some point, I remember, I do remember it a little closer to the Y at some point, yeah. Yeah, I do remember it closer to the Y at some point, yeah. No, I don't remember, yeah, this is, this seems different.
I think that's correct, I think that's correct, it was closer to the Y.
Yeah, I like this location in the middle, it makes more sense, it's further away from the neighbors. The problem is, you can't put it any further away, because if you put it any further away, then you're going to turn it facing the neighbors.
No, no, I. So I think, I think we can leave the language as it is, unless we want to put something in about limiting the amplification.
I would really appreciate.
But Ann, if there's a complaint, you know, try to deal with the manager to see if you can get satisfaction with that, and if you can't.
Go to Paul's house.
Call me or email me, but certainly call the planning department the next day, and the planning department will contact Jeff.
That's good.
You know, and say, Jeff, you got to tone it down.
Ann, if you want to take a copy of that, give that back to me, and I'll take it off and give it to you.
And then, Larry, I know you want to speak, Larry, we're trying to get him over, do you want to speak first, or do you want Larry to speak? Larry, please, if you could say your name and address for the record? We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
You're on mute.
Thank you.
That'll be attached to the decision.
Now he's muted.
Now he's muted.
Now you're muted.
Check your volume button, Larry.
Wait, I don't think he realized he's not being.
Another solution is, we could give him the phone number, and he could call in. You know, I don't remember what the phone number is, the Zoom phone number.
If you're on a Mac or a PC, you can go into settings and check your microphone. Is this, maybe it's not set for internal mic or something like that.
There's an arrow next to the U. Arrow next to the U.
Can you hear me? You can call this number. Ready?
Larry, do you want to nod your head up and down if you understood?
He's getting his phone now.
If you got the number?
Then I believe when you call that, you have to enter the meeting ID.
Yeah, we got you.
I have another suggestion.
Jeff, not right now, Jeff, thank you very much. Want to say that again, just a little slower? You got the first three.
Ann, I haven't called in myself, but I think you have to enter the meeting ID number.
Just before we get that, Larry, did you get that phone number? Do you want to nod up and down? You got the number, good, okay. Have the meeting ID number, you ready, Larry? Nice and slowly. All of this technology is driven by the telephony, that's why it's a phone number, it's a meeting ID.
Oh, this turns so hard to look.
I know.
Yes.
Do you see a phone number?
Yeah, he sees that.
Oh, he's there, yeah. Should be, good.
You have to bring him, allow him to.
No, no, we, we have to bring you over, Larry.
No, we're good, we're good. What's the code to unmute? Is it star nine?
It's either star six or star nine.
Larry, try star six.
Yeah, because it's muted, so.
There you go.
Yes.
All right. Apologies, sorry. Is there an echo? Because there is on this side.
There is, do you want to turn off your video? That's fine.
Turn off the speedler on your computer. Turn off the speaker on your computer.
Yeah, put the computer on mute. There you go.
You just quit the application.
Do what with the computer?
Yeah, like Adam said, just quit, quit on Zoom on your computer. You don't have to see.
I'm just going to close the computer.
There you go, good.
We have you now.
All right. I, I apologize. Sorry for that technical problem. I'm not sure what it is, but I couldn't get the volume working. But it's, it's Larry Cohen calling Precinct F. I'm a town meeting member, and I live at 77 Warren Street, which is just behind the place structure at Greensfield. So I'm also, by way of full disclosure, a, an abutter to this problem. But I just wanted to call to support Anne Watson's comments. And I think, you know, really the telltale in this, and I know you were about to make some decision that maybe self policing is going to work, or hopefully it will this year, but I think the telltale comment really came at the beginning of the hearing, when you read the letter from the church across the street. Because what they said was, you really have to stop music and not begin until or after 11:30 in the morning because you were disturbing our church service. So I think if the music was loud enough to get across the street into the church, and if they were disturbed, then it's not surprising to me who Anne, who lives just maybe a, 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 a double or triple away, that is, from the baseball field, really, really just steps away from where the, from where the, the band might be playing, she's going to hear it very loud. So I, I think, I think it is an issue. I don't think self policing helps it because as our, as the chair points out, we tried that and it didn't work. So, you know, low volume, maybe no more than three or four. I, I don't know. I, you know, I, I heard Artie's comments, and I'm sympathetic to that as well, which is, we just don't know how loud it ought to be where it's not going to be imposing upon somebody else's space. But I think what we are hearing is that it is imposing upon Anne and her family. And I think that's critical because next door to Anne, I can tell you is a, an elderly woman who is someone who's been hospitalized, who's back in rehabilitation, who's back in her house. I'm, I'm sure she hasn't made a complaint, but she's right there as well. So you do have neighbors who are impacted. I think the music apparently has been loud, loud enough for the church to put it in writing. So it's not just Anne's comments. I think Anne's comments don't stand alone. They're the neighbor across the street who says that you're disturbing our, our church service. So I'd like to say something, it seems to me. Go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was, I was just going to thank you. I think your point about the effect of the church is significant enough to cause them to delay it, that it's clearly loud enough, consistently enough, to penetrate a church service, certainly speaks volumes, pun intended, to, to Anne's cause for remedy. So thank you very much for making that good point.
All right. I appreciate that, and good luck with these, with these deliberations. But I do think it's important, and I would like to see some policing from, from, from your board rather than self policing, which may not work again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Take care.
You're touching. You've been patient.
I just think, I, I agree with Artie. I completely understand what you're saying. I live across from, from a temple and I live on a main road and, and, but I think if the music is located in the correct location, which it may not, it sounded like it was not at the time, and if the mute, if there are, if we're saying that there's someone that you can go to, or anyone can go to with any complaints, and we make sure that whoever's playing the music knows that it needs to be within a reasonable sound, we should try it because it, if there are opportunities for it as well as, you know, for the community. But I completely agree with you. If it becomes a problem, you need to be able to tell someone and we need to be able to have something occur.
We need to be able to.
And we need to be actionable about it.
Immediately. The board, getting redressed from us and from the planning department on a Sunday afternoon is preposterous. That's an impossibility. That's absolute no solution. I think the only way we can do this is either as, as Gene has suggested, or to have a requirement that it be at no, it, it, the location is fixed, that it be no greater than a volume two. I would not permit above that if we were to do that. And provided that your name and number, Jeff, is posted on a, on a, on a large sign, you know, for any questions about, with a message, that for any questions about the, you know, for the farmer's market operations, including the music, please call this number immediately, and that that is absolutely visible at all times. And if it's not, then under, under no circumstance would you be permitted to amplify the music. But I really, what I think that, I think as Larry has pointed out, and as was requested by the church, the fact that the church has had to make that request, which the farmer's market was willing to accommodate, I think is proof positive. It's not just a once scenario, and I'm frankly not sympathetic of the location because we're talking about 15, we're talking about 15 feet outside. Changing the location of, of where the speaker is by 15 feet is not going to satisfy Larry, Anne, or the church when it's amplified. So, but we're not at that point yet. We, you know, it sounds like Gene would make that appropriate motion when we get there. And I think, Anne, at this point, if you would give us a couple of minutes to finish up the, you know, some of the preliminary business, we'll come to the satisfaction. Do you have any other comments?
Okay, well, I, I, I hope it works.
We hear you, pun intended.
I know you do, and I appreciate that, but I'm not very optimistic to be perfectly honest.
I don't, I don't take that lightly. Like I said.
Yeah.
We, there's, we need to take a motion to, you know, to, to close the hearing. That's some administrative business. Then we're going to discuss, you know, voting on the relief, and then we're going to make a decision on voting for the decision. And that's when we'll have an opportunity in moments from now to discuss any additional conditions and restrictions to ensure that we have satisfaction and a reasonable relief to accommodate, you know, the, the noise issue, which is clearly beyond your own borders.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Jeff, do you have any last comment before we close the hearing?
No, I other, I apologize, Anne, and to anybody we disrupted. It's certainly not our intent, and it's not the, the main goal. Well, is the farmer's market's about the community, and we obviously do not want to disturb any of the abutters. And I'm kind of surprised and, you know, saddened that this occurred, you know. Had I known, you know, we certainly would have taken some kind of action, remedial action.
I understand. Thank you very much. At this point, Lee, do we have anything else outstanding on any item in this file?
No.
Does anyone else have anything else to say before we entertain a motion to close the hearing?
I, I, I just want to, when's the first Sunday that the farmer's market will be open?
June 11th.
June 11th. And so, Anne, we do have a planning board meeting scheduled for June 20th. So if, if on the 11th and the 18th, you're finding the music to be too loud and you're not getting satisfaction by, by complaining to somebody at the, at the farmer's market, call the planning office Monday through Friday, and it's certainly something that we can, we can take up at our June 20th meeting. I don't think we've scheduled our July meetings yet.
And, yeah, I would say to that, if we go the direction of allowing some amplification.
At least our planning director and our assistant planning director will be able to communicate with Jeff.
If we go, if, we'll, we'll, we'll come to that in a second. Gene?
Yeah, I, I note that our, our prior decision and this decision says, in the event of any complaint or issue regarding noise volume or amplification, the planning board shall retain the restriction to reevaluate. So we would continue having that sentence.
Right.
Right, of course.
Yeah, we would take action quickly, as you said. And when we get into talking about the exact wording, I do, I do have one, one suggestion.
So Jeff, one last comment before we close the hearing? Are you okay for us to close the hearing now?
I don't know. It'll be satisfaction, but to Anne, but whatever happens, you know, in terms of the decision involving the music levels, I'm going to give you my telephone number, 781.
You have to give her a second, Jeff.
What?
And you know, you know what? All right, so here's.
Hey, Jeff, 781.
241.
2.
41.
20. 37.
20, 2037. And his name is Jeff.
781, 241, 2037. Jeff Friedman. I'm president of the farmer's market, and, you know, my job is to make sure these things don't occur. I carry that cell phone with me most of the time.
Jeff, that's good. We got to continue with our business here. Can I entertain a motion to close the hearing, please?
We'll be closed, the hearing.
Motion, a second, motion by Paul, second by Gene. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? By nay. Motion carries unanimously. Now to the question of granting the relief. Okay, you want to handle that now? And then to the written decision, which is when we'll come to.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the requested major project site plan review special permit under section 7.4 of the bylaw, and under the major project site plan special permit number 2022-01, section 4.2 dated April 5, 2022, a major project site plan special permit amendment. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 3.2.1 of the bylaw for a farmer's market in the single residence B zoning district. And I move that we grant the requested special permit under section 5.1.1.5 of the bylaw to waive strict adherence with the off-street parking requirements of section 5.1.2 and 5.1.3 of the bylaw, subject to and with the benefit of the plan modifications, conditions, and limitations that will be spelled out in the, our decision.
That's the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Artie, motion by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposition. The motion carries. Now to the question of the decision, and in particular to section 3.4.
Yep.
Of the decision, let us, before we get into wording, discuss our options. Option one is to allow amplification at a certain volume threshold with a provision that, that the farmer's market be required to post at all times in a very visible manner, in large font and so forth, the name and phone number of the market manager, including the cell phone number in particular, and also the cell phone number of Jeff as the, as the president of the market, particularly in the event that if, you know, the market manager is clearly not visible, there should be a second means of relief on site. That would seem to be the one option. And with an additional requirement, the mute, that the music stay in the fixed location as noted on the site plan. And the other option, which is my personal preferred option, is to really try, there's a couple of, I guess there's three options. One is to go with, the second option is to go with no music for the first, for, for the first two farmer's markets.
You mean no amplification?
Sorry. No, thank you. No amplification for the first two markets. And then we can find out if that's really so disruptive and, and, you know, not disastrous, but almost to that effect.
Precludes the benefit of any music at the market at all?
Well.
Problem.
You know, and then, and then.
The, the problem is that if we don't allow the amplification for the first two, and Jeff wants to.
Right.
Come back to us to amend our decision, we don't have, the, 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 the second market is two days before our next meeting. That's not enough time to put it on the agenda and post the agenda and have it properly in front of us as an amendment.
I don't know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a requirement to have an amendment.
Well, but if you've got wording in the, if you've got wording in our decision that says no amplification.
For the first two meetings, and if in the reasonable judgment of the, of the, the farmer's market, that amplification, that some amplification would be necessary, then they would do it under these conditions only. And then, and then if that's not the case, then we would just go straight to the other option, which is to have no amplification, period, for this particular year at this site. And given the, and given the, effectively it was, it was just as kind as Anne, yet it's still a complaint, the fact that it was disrupting, you know, our church service, and a church service is not quiet in and of itself.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go the other route totally. I think, I'm, I'm going to take, I'm going to take Jeff at, at his word.
What?
That he's heard the complaints, and he will do something about it in terms of planning with the music people and with the managers, manager or managers of the market to tell them that it's important that they keep the volume down because the neighbors had complained about the volume from last year. And hopefully, if it's still too loud, Anne will let us know. Will let them know and will let us know so that we're still dealing with June, and, and, you know, not, not even into July, where we can, where, where we can say to Jeff, you know, Jeff, it's not working. We're still getting complaints. You got to tone it down. You got to tone it down. And hopefully.
It's not.
Hopefully, it will.
I don't want to continue to go back to Jeff and say, tone it down every time.
But that's our job. That's why we have a provision that says that we're retaining jurisdiction.
Right, but the fact that the church has complained, and Anne, and Larry have complained.
The church has only said, you know, we're, we're fine with it as long as it starts after 11:30. So the church is satisfied.
Because it's after their service.
That's right.
But the rest of the neighborisms aren't satisfied.
What?
They're not satisfied while it's, while, while music is being conducted during the time of their service.
With all due respect, it's not a they. Right now, it's a she. We've had one complaint. Larry has, Larry did not complain about the music. He just said he's supporting Anne's position as a good neighbor. And what I'm saying, Anne, we've heard Jeff say that he's sensitive to it. He hears the complaint. He's sensitive to it. He's willing to do something about it. And as I said, I'm willing to take him at, at his word on it, but at the first complaint from Anne, you know, I'll be on Jeff like white on rice.
I said they because they refers to the church. Go ahead, Gene.
Yeah, I have changed my mind about, about posing that there be no amplification. Listening to Artie and realizing, just thinking about music in, in an outdoor setting where there are people milling around, it's true that you would not hear the music at all without some kind of amplification. Now, I don't know myself anything about amplifying music. So you, Ms. Chair, use the phrase, it should be not more than two. Do you understand what that means? Does that make sense?
That's a very relative thing to different amplifiers. It's not, it's not, it's not, it's not practical at this point to say two, because we really don't know what that means.
So unfortunately.
Just like we can't. Just like we can't say exactly what's decibel. Because, I mean, sound drops off as the distance goes. And this music is about 50 feet away or so. We would take maybe 45 feet from where it was before.
OK, just set an amplification level.
I mean, we don't want farmers market doesn't want to disturb the neighbors. That was clear from the beginning when we had the when the decision last time. Again, no music leaving the at Mr. Block, no music leaving the site was never going to happen anyway. People are talking. I mean, everything is going to leave the site. But we tried to do it before.
To refer as speaking, saying a fixed location, or maybe it was you, a fixed location as shown on the site plan. Make that, you know, put that in section 3.4. Also requiring the market manager name and cellphone and the farmer's market president name and cellphone should be posted permanently on the site. And the language we have about retaining jurisdiction to reevaluate. Then one more thing I would add. In the very first sentence, I would still say free acoustic musical entertainment. Because I think there's a difference between an acoustic guitar, for example, or an electric guitar. You can have acoustic music, which is amplified with microphones.
But you can also have it amplified by plug-in.
But you don't need electric guitars or an electric piano or anything like that. So that is just a suggestion to use the word.
Except for, I mean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just think we're being too limiting. I think if we put the controls to review and now we know that it could be an issue and we totally thank you for coming in and letting us know, then we can see how, we'll see the first week how it works out. And please let us know, right? And so, but I feel like we can put all these things, but there's always loopholes. So I think we just kind of need to see.
Control. The other interesting thing is it sounds like it's not the same musician every time. So what happens on the first week doesn't mean that the second week the person's going to be so.
Right, but I mean, again, we can't control what the amplifiers do. I mean, I think it, we have to see how it goes. It might be that it's so obnoxious that you come back to us and we say, look, we need to revise this. This isn't working. But I think we need to give it a chance since this is the first time that we've heard the complaint. That, I mean, that's my point of view.
As I stated, like Ms. Ashley's saying, I mean, first time. Although, again, I say when I've been at the farmer's market, I've been seeing, well, that's a little loud. I wish it wasn't. But again, I could leave. I wasn't, I wasn't thinking of the neighbors. I wasn't thinking of behind, you know, the Y or, you know, adjacent to it and so forth. I just wasn't, I'm sorry, Ann.
So Artie's going to be our control.
I will be the control, sure. I bring my decibel meter and I'll check it out.
So now we are, and you're going to deny, and you're going to deny her relief.
What's that?
Now you are, right? You've heard the complaint, which you didn't hear before. And while you're sympathetic, you're still going to deny the relief.
But that's not true.
That's an absurd way.
To have amplification.
We've got a suggestion from Jean, which was basically, I believe, a reiteration of what you proposed.
Right.
Which is that we state that the music shall be at the fixed location as shown on the plan. We put that into the decision.
Yes.
We put into the decision that there be a sign with the name and cellphone number for the for the market manager who was there in a conspicuous place and of the president of a farmer's market. And other than that, I think, I think we leave we leave the language as it is. We're retaining jurisdiction. So.
We can hear a complaint again.
We can, we can hear a complaint. It may not be, it probably won't be until the next day. But.
And if that's the case, then the next remedy has to be no music.
Well, whatever it is, we'll discuss that at the board meeting.
I mean, that's.
Well, I mean, this is.
No, we'll.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that also.
If Lee's followed that, then we.
Lee and Alex, do you have that?
I have it.
But are we, I mean, are we actually changing?
Yes, yes, we're changing, we're changing the wording of 3.4. Which is changing the wording of 3.11.
Yeah, I mean, and changing it again from what the draft was. Or we're just leaving alone?
No, what we're adding is, we're adding, we're adding in that the music shall only be at the fixed location as shown on the plan. And we're adding in that they will add a sign, a conspicuous sign that has the name and cellphone number of a market manager that day and the president of the farmer's market.
I just wanted to make sure that something else wasn't getting in there. Because we've been talking about a lot of stuff here.
Other than that, it's the same as it states now. You know, there's, there will be the musical entertainment with amplification, if any, shall be limited and no noise shall extend beyond Green's Field. I know that's going to be difficult to enforce, but at least it gives Ann something to say it's been extending beyond Green's Field. You're in violation of.
We know it's going to extend beyond Green's Field. Just a matter of is it bothering you?
And then we have already, in the event of a complaint, the planning board retains jurisdiction.
Just to be clear, one last time. So that, so we have a motion to amend the decision.
We haven't voted the decision. We have the language, you know, with the language that we're discussing tonight.
I just, I just I just want to be clear, and this is not a question for Ann because we've closed the hearing at this time. But she said that the noise, just so we're all clear, that the problem was bad enough one time that required her to leave her house for hours. But that the problem still persisted. So it wasn't just once and done.
I know that.
OK, so I just want that to be clear on the record.
We're all trying to work it. And I hear Jeff, he's trying to, he's trying to work with us here.
And it's important, and I know, I know from experience, sometimes when I've gone to musicians and various things I've been to saying, could you turn it down? Sometimes I have to make sure and it's done twice. Or you go to, or I go to the manager of the event or something like that saying, you know, please, it's just, it's way too loud. They've got to do something. Because the musicians, like DJs, musicians, they want to do what they want to do sometimes.
All right, let's get on with our business. It's 8:30, we're an hour late on the next, over an hour late of the next hearing. So want to make a motion to amend the decision?
We're not amending anything. I want to make a motion to accept the decision with the change that we just discussed.
That's a better motion.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. The motion carries. And as we get ready for our next one, Ann, I'm going to give you my phone number. I'd like you to text me. I'll mark it down for you. I got the pencils, are you OK?
OK.
I'm going to give you mine.
I really will when I go there. I really will make sure I remember.
Well, I think, you know, you'll hear from me.
That's the most important thing. If we don't hear, if we don't get a complaint, we don't know.
Well, I didn't understand that last year that, you know, first of all, I couldn't believe how unbelievable it was and that they were, they were not responsive. And then I.
Well, that's the problem. Well, that's why I think we want to make sure it doesn't happen again.
You got to hit, you got to, you have to hit the market manager. You have to talk to the right person. I guarantee they will be responsive.
Text me first instead of calling. You're usually more responsive to a text.
OK.
But if not, still try calling. And then I'll go over to the market myself and I'll make sure you got some immediate relief.
OK.
We also need, I think, to deal with the issue of the request for the waiver of the fee, which also needs to be voted by the.
Yes, you're right.
We waive the fee for the farmer's market application.
Any discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, all. So now we are at, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to invite the crew from 920 South Street. With.
Come on, George, you've been here before.
We apologize for the delay. We appreciate your patience.
George is used to it.
The next item on our agenda are continued hearings for the definitive subdivision, the Scenic Road Act and the Public Shade Tree Act relating to the redevelopment of 920 South Street with Brian Connaughton as the petitioner. With us tonight is Brian Connaughton and his attorney, George Junta. I note for the record that we've received a letter from attorney Junta dated March 7, together with an updated set of plans dated February 23. We have an email in our file dated December 15, 2022, from Debbie Anderson, Director of Conservation. Mr. Junta, have you seen, and Brian, have you seen that letter from the Conservation Commission?
Not sure if I've seen the Conservation.
December 15? It was an email.
December 15, we should have seen it, yes.
There was, we have an email in our file dated December 15.
It basically says there are wetlands, so you need to apply to them.
Right.
So I just want to make sure my question was going to be. Well, have you presented these updated plans to the, because these were dated February 23, I think, of 2023? Have these been submitted to CONCOM?
So we have not been before CONCOM yet.
OK, all right. And that would be your next step, is that right?
That's right.
OK.
Oh, you probably are going to share your screen, aren't you? So I don't have to share this?
Oh, actually, if you have it, then that's fine.
OK. Yeah, I'll share it.
That makes it easier.
Just let me know.
Introduce yourself, George.
You can leave it on that one, that one's what I'm going to start with.
George, your name and address.
All right. George, George Junta Jr., I'm the attorney representing Brian Connaughton, the applicant here before you with respect to 920 South Street. And it has been some time since we've been before you. December was the last hearing. So let me kind of refresh your recollections, as we like to say in the law, as to what this is about. So basically, 920 South Street is a property on the south side of South Street, not too far from the intersection of Chestnut Street. It's almost six-acre parcel that goes from South Street all the way down to the Charles River. Very large, very nice piece of property. It is in the Rural Residence Conservation District, was formerly the site of the Stanley Tippet Hospice House, roughly from approximately 1993 to about 2021-ish. The Tippet House has now been taken down and removed. And it's basically, the site's kind of in the process of getting soft-prepped for the development that's anticipated. So we have submitted, we previously submitted a set of plans that showed you a conforming conventional subdivision. And I'm using the word conforming not by right to note that it's by right except it requires the one standard waiver that is pretty much always granted for a 40-foot road instead of 50-foot road to show that we can do two lots under the guidelines, under the rules and regulations for the property and that that works. Because what we really want to do is we want to do two lots, but we have asked for a waiver of construction on almost all the standard requirements. And instead of doing the 40-foot wide layout for the road, we have proposed instead only a 20-foot wide layout with an 18-foot wide pavement. And the idea for that is multi-fold. On the first instance, it reduces the amount of pavement, considering that we're only going to be serving two houses. Basically, it puts in a oversized driveway, which is sufficient to serve only two houses. It also, having a road like that is in keeping with the character of the area. And this is the Rural Residence Conservation District. So having less asphalt, having a more narrow road is in keeping with that, both in terms of the underlying district characterization, also in terms with the look and feel of the area. And in fact, there have been several other developments along South Street in the Rural Residence Conservation that have done similar things, that give it a country feel or a state-type feel. So basically, that's what we're going for. And where it's only the two houses, you know, we feel it is appropriate for that. I would have liked if we could have done a smaller circle. But in meeting with the fire chief, he still wants a full circle, be able to get the vehicles in and around and out. You know, in the prior years, we've done some of these where we've actually had alternative turnarounds. Some of them maybe have worked better than others. But he definitely wants the ability to get in and out quickly. So the only way to do that is with the circle. So we still have to have a decent circle. Although our circle that we are proposing is a little bit smaller than the standard 60-foot radius. I think we're a 54-foot, 52-foot radius. So it's just a little bit smaller. But it still allows for the truck to get all the way around and out.
Has the fire department seen the 52-foot? And approved the 52-feet? So that's wide enough for their apparatus?
It is, it is. As a part of that, what we do is we do an easement around the edge. So the, it's enough for the wheels, for the truck itself to kind of get around. But one of the things in conversations with the department over this reduced circle, which has come up in other projects as well, they have indicated they like a sort of a buffer, if you will, because the front of the truck overhangs. And if we have hydrants or mailboxes or whatever that are too close, they'll get taken out. And while it probably isn't, you know, a big problem for the mailbox, it probably won't hurt the truck much, but then the mailbox has to get replaced. So, and they don't like that. So anyway, so we have to go with, still, you know, you can see how big the circle looks, right? It's a, kind of eats up a lot of space, but that's what we have to do.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is the circle asphalt or could there be a planter in the center?
It actually, there is going to be an island in the middle. Yeah, it's not going to be a sea of asphalt.
The drawing I have here.
Yeah, I think on, maybe the next topographic one, maybe, I think, that's right. There you go, that shows it. Right, so you can see the sort of the inner circle is the island, which will be vegetated or landscaped. And we are showing it for now, we're going with pavement all the way around the circle. But as we get down the road, we may come back. We may ask for something a little bit different in terms of surface. But we wanted to keep it simple and straightforward.
How wide is the pavement at the circle?
It's 18 feet all the way around.
And, OK, I don't, I'm looking and I'm not seeing a recent memo.
From the fire department?
The fire department.
Or the police.
Or the police.
I don't know that that, I don't know that that's changed, if that part of it's changed.
Right, right.
We never got any letter.
Yeah, usually.
From the original application?
Usually Lee and Alex put the entire file into the packet.
So you would have gotten the earlier comments earlier.
My notes from, my notes from our earlier meeting. And the next meeting was just a continuation. But the earlier meeting say we have not yet gotten anything from fire and police.
Yeah, I'll double check.
And that was the meeting of the first.
I think you're right about that. I think we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't. We haven't gotten anything in writing from fire and police that I could find from either of the prior meetings. Obviously, there's been discussion, but we need to have the.
Do you have anything else in your files from the public safety?
No, I don't.
OK, so we don't have it. So we'll obviously need, thank you for bringing that up. So, so we'll obviously need, thank you for bringing that up, we'll obviously need, either before we close the hearing or.
Yeah, we'll probably have to continue the hearing pending, pending we see comments from the fire. And, and it looks like, yeah, it, it looks like we have heard from, from Public Works. This is, this is March 23rd. So we've got a letter from Public Works, which is basically talking about the neptunist requirements.
Yes.
I don't, have you seen that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And, yeah, then we get into the next, the next matter on the agenda. So, so all that, all that I see here in our packet tonight is Department of Public Works and, and Conservation Commission. And I'll just, it's, it's three and a half lines, so let me read to you what the Conservation Commission says. Due to the extensive wetland resource area is located on the site, the applicant will be required to contact Conservation for any proposed work or disturbance of the property, including but not limited to tree removal, excavation, construction, et cetera, to determine, to determine whether a filing with them is required.
Well, we have a meeting scheduled on April 4th, but that gives you basically a week. And I don't know if we have enough time, you know, for notice of the continued hearing. So in the event that things were expedited, and you could get, you know, before the Conservation Commission.
Well, we, we know we're going to have to go before them in a.
No, but we can, we can issue our decision without us having to go to CONCOM. All that, all that we need in the next week, if we can handle it, if we can close the hearing next week, is hearing, hearing from, from fire and police.
Right.
So our, our decision on any locates, topography of trees?
We're going to discuss that now.
No, no, I understand that, but, but any, anything kind of coming out of CONCOM, if it affects that, if we make our decision?
No, we just have our usual provision that says that they have to comply with all the other agencies.
Okay.
So whatever CONCOM tells them, tells them to do, if they don't do it, they're in violation of both CONCOM and us.
Okay.
We're afraid of Jane and Bernardo than us.
And then, so that allows them to close the hearing sooner rather than later, and they still have to go through the regulatory process. Lee, you were going to say something, I think?
I was just going to reinforce what George was saying, which is that the conservation process is separate and independent from the subdivision process.
Yes. Thank you very much. Gene?
Yep. I heard George Junta say that the turnaround is going to be a certain distance of 52 or something, he says, I don't see that on the plan, but the, that there is to be an easement. What are you speaking of, George, as the easement? I see on the east side of the road, a five-foot utility easement, is that the easement you're speaking of?
No, no, this is, this is around the circle, it's, I don't even know, it might not be shown on the plan.
I, I'm looking at the writing, sorry, it's, let's see, page number, oh, page three, sheet three of eight.
Yeah, and it's.
And I was just looking at that easement, and I didn't know if that's what you're talking about, George.
There's, no, and it's actually only a small area, so I'm not even sure if we actually technically need it. So if you go to the, actually, Alex, the next sheet, please. It's that one, next sheet right there. If you actually look in the cert, you can see, you can see sort of the outer circle, that's the layout, then the next circle in is the edge of the pavement. Right, so there isn't, there's a gap inside that that's sufficient to allow for the overhang of the, of the truck to get around. But as you come around the circle, there is a little bit of room on the, little bit of spot on the backside where, where the easement might be necessary, but it's, we don't really show it on here, and actually, I'm not sure that we even need to, because now you're beyond where the hydrant and where the mailbox would be for the house.
Well, we'd have to have the fire department tell us that this is fine, but you're not strictly speaking, you're not strictly speaking, talking about an easement, you're talking about the paved area has a certain diameter, and, but the layout is wider than that.
Right.
And so nothing would be built there, and nothing would be put there that would prevent the fire trucks from going around.
Right. All right, so, so the basic layout of the subdivision is the same as you saw back in December. However, if you remember, we, one of the neighbors had some concerns, and we had already committed to making certain changes, so we revised the plans accordingly. And basically, we did a couple of things. The first thing, which we actually discussed at the last hearing where we had a presentation, was originally, we had the drainage on the west side of the property, which is the bottom here on the screen, and we have now flipped it, so the drainage line is now on the east side. It runs from the circle, you can see it going up to the, to the property line there, and then comes down, and it actually comes down to a infiltration area, a retention, a detention basin, that's, that basically between the two sloped areas towards the bottom there.
Yours, where, where the elevation drops from 220 to 215?
From, it actually.
Well, the.
You can see it anywhere, it says proposed drain easement.
Yes.
So that, so that's where the infiltration basin goes.
And you, the two locations shown on the plan is proposed drain easement, and you're speaking of the one that's in the middle of the lot, there's another one near the front of the lot.
That's right, that's right. And I'll, I'll discuss that in just a moment.
Right.
All right, so, so originally, so the, the infiltration system's in roughly the same location, it's moved over slightly, but it's in roughly the same location as before, but now, instead of the, the, basically the pipe that connects to it coming down the, the bottom side of the property, now it comes along the top side of the property. So we flipped that, we, and then probably the biggest change that we made is we took the whole road and dropped it down three feet. So previously, we had the road, it was a bit higher at the, at the high point, and that's partly because we were trying to work with the topography of the site, the existing topography, but that was creating some challenges to address the concerns of the, of the neighbor. And in looking at it, we realized we could drop that down, and that would, that would do a significant amount of change to the grading that would help the concerns of the neighbor. So we dropped that down, and by dropping that down, we were able to kind of stretch out a little bit the, the grades, so that now, instead of it being a more steep slope, it's a little bit more of a gentle slope. Not to say there isn't so slope there, but it's, but it's markedly better than what it was on the original design.
So there's a 10-foot slope from the property line, it looks like 245 to 235?
Going from.
Yeah.
Right, so, so that was the biggest thing we did, and with that, a bunch of the grading changed, most notably, the grading along the side there and sort of on the back on Lot 2. The grading on Lot 1 didn't change all that much, did change a little bit, because the circle is now three feet lower, but it didn't change all that much. But Lot 2 in particular, the grading changed on that lot. Along with the grading changes, we've also put in a swale and a berm. So now there's a 10-foot, you can kind of see it on there, there's a 10-foot planting strip, that's going to be a dedicated planting strip, that's going to be a raised planting strip. It's, I think it says on the plan that it's 12 inches, 12 inches high, so it creates sort of a berm to stop any runoff from going onto the neighbor there. And then there's a swale that's going to direct the water, basically, water comes down, the grades, towards that berm, and then runs along the inside edge of that berm, along a swale towards the back, basically where the water is already flowing now. So we're essentially helping direct the water. A lot of it was going that way already, but we're directing it more to make sure that it doesn't go on to the neighbor's property.
And you're, and the detention basin, the water infiltration system on Lot 2 is outside of the 50-foot buffer, but in, mostly inside the 100-foot buffer line.
It's about, about half of the system is in, inside the 100-foot buffer, right. So that's why I say, we know we have to go to Conservation anyways, but general, the general sort of procedure has been usually to get the subdivision approved first.
Yes, understood.
And then you go to them, and in the unlikely event that you have any big issues, you sometimes have to come back and address, but hopefully, hopefully not. So there is riverfront, but we are outside of that.
Or you're.
We're well, we're well outside.
You're outside of 20 feet of the river.
Yeah, we're well outside that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's, there's the 200-foot river, but then in the, sort of the edge, the outside 100 feet of that river, there's wetlands, so then there's another strip on that. And in fact, I think the, the river line is shown, I'm not sure if it's shown on this, but it's shown on one of the plans. Yeah. Yeah, so we're outside, we're outside the Rivers Act, yeah. We specify, this is part of the reason why the, the design on Lot 2 is the way it is, we're trying to keep it up in the high part and keep it out of the river and out of the, you know, out of the wetlands and the, the bordering, the buffer zone as much as we can.
Bordered vegetative wetlands.
Yes. So we're trying to keep it out as much as we can. All right, so we relocated drain, dropped the thing. We've added, the previous plan did not have house footprints, and I will caution you, I always get nervous when we put house footprints on subdivision plans, because technically, the houses are not a part of the subdivision approval, but there's always this gray area because there, there is a philosophical position that once it's shown on the plan, it's a part of the approved plan. But I will simply say that these are our best guesses to design. I think we're probably more accurate on Lot 2 than on Lot 1. But these are just mainly to give you an idea of the grading, and the boxes may be slightly different, and maybe in slightly different locations, especially Lot 1. Lot 2 is pretty well set. All right. By putting those on.
Can I ask a quick question? So basically, the grading that you're showing, especially down here, because the other one is in a big field, but, you know, it's, whatever, it's, it's within, you're not changing the grading, that will be updated based on the location of the house to make sure that the water still will remain on the site.
So.
If the, if the land, you know, if the house is not there, then your grading around the house will need to change.
Right, correct. In fact, if I understand you correctly. However, what I'm saying is Lot 2, that box and that location.
It's a good chance that it will be there.
99%.
Right, right.
I'm saying Lot 1 is more.
Right.
Is less certain. But we specifically did Lot 2 because the grading in that lot, especially sort of from the front of the house going, going back.
Yeah.
Is the grading that was of concern, so we did, did want to make sure we got that right. So, you know, that grading is subject to, you know, really minor things in the field, which you always have. Basically, this is, this is what we're proposing.
The, the access to the river is only through Lot 2, right?
Correct. Correct. All right, let's see, so we, we've added, some of this grading was not shown on the prior plan because it wasn't strictly related to the subdivision, and therefore, we didn't show it, but we've now added it to provide some more information, so, so everybody can see. I said we already committed to the 12-foot planting strip, and Brian has also committed to working with, with Sergey, the neighbor, who's here this evening, on the planting plan for that 10-foot strip, as well as plantings along that line generally, to ensure that there is a vegetated, sort of screen, vegetated border, that is a year-round vegetated buffer, so that it doesn't, so that in the middle of the winter, it's not just completely bare and see-through. It'll be a mix of evergreens and, 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 deciduous?
And, and.
Trees that have leaves and trees that are evergreens, yes, yes. All right, so, so basically, it's the same layout, same scheme, same idea, it's just that we've dropped it down three feet to ease out the grading, and we've made some small adjustments to the side to make the grading better and less of an impact to the neighbor there.
Do my colleagues have any questions at this point?
George, if I can remember, I think you may have mentioned it last time. And I, and I'm not complaining by any means, but why is there a 50-foot no disturbance area at the street?
That's required by the bylaw.
It is?
Yes. That's part of the Rural Residence Conservation District.
Part of the, okay, that's the answer.
Yes, and so that's, I, I said I was going to come back to it. So our infiltration system in the front is just outside that, it's basically right at the edge of that, because we can't put it, any of it in. You can go in, you can do pruning, you can do work to get your road in, you know, you can do sort of, you know, basic stuff, but you can't, it's supposed to be kept as a natural vegetated thing. We may actually want to put some additional plantings in there because there's a bunch of dead stuff, and in fact, as a part of the scenic road, there's a tree, I think, that's in that area that has to, that has to come out.
You discussed it at the last, I think, the first hearing, when you were talking about the wall. If I, if I may, I'd like to invite at this time Sergey, the neighbor, up to the table.
Sure.
Please, and if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sergey.
Have a seat, get comfortable.
My name is.
Close to the microphone.
I'm Sergey Aliyev, and I reside at 31 Maran Drive, which is basically directly about 920 South Street. I was the one who actually first time raised some concern about the subdivision plan, about the plans, and I would like to thank Brian, his attorney Junta, his engineer, that they were willing to work, it was my team, it was my attorney, and it was my engineer, so we revised plans somewhat, and at this point, I'm in support of this plan, as they were presented today to the commission. The only thing remaining, as attorney Junta mentioned, that, that strip, that strip, we decided to work together, so we can benefit, basically, both of us. In this case, and put something there which is consistent with the area, with the landscape of that area. So I'm pretty sure we will be working this out together, but I'm very pleased to the way how we basically interacted and how we work together.
Good, good. I appreciate that.
Happy neighbors make for a happy planning board.
Yeah. Define if it's not necessary, right?
That's right, exactly. So, you know, I commend both of you for, you know, your collegial work, your collaboration.
Before, I have been living there for 28 years, I don't know how long I will stay there anymore because my kids are gone, but I would like to welcome, of course, Brian, he plans to live there to this neighborhood, which is a wonderful neighborhood, especially with this type of setup with the property and with the Charles River, with the field. So hopefully, and not hopefully, I'm pretty sure that they will be happy there.
May I ask, Mr. Aliyev?
Yes.
Good question. I, the little map I have here, I can't see Melon Drive. Is your house on the bottom side of that map or on the top side?
No, it's actually right next to the proposed house in Lot Number 2, we will be facing each other.
So this is.
Oh, that map shows it. Oh, 11 Maran Drive.
Yeah, I also have access to the river, to the.
The conditions map, thank, all right, thank you. Just wanted to know where you were, right? Oh, it's 31, of course.
31.
31.
Yes.
The one in, at the rear, and, and you'd be now separated with the 12, the 10-12-foot wide landscape strip and, and.
That's right here.
The water running towards my property, because even just recent rains, this actually was a lake behind my house, which will be basically the lake behind his house as well over there, because, I mean, it's tons of water.
Very good.
Not all the time, but sometimes.
Do you have any other comments or questions for either the board or for Brian?
Not really, again, I would like to thank him one more time for cooperating and coming to this resolution.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming tonight.
That's very helpful.
So we, you know, a note for the record, Paul, you, you mentioned this about the NPDS wastewater management requirement, which I'm sure that you saw from town, the town engineer, and just to confirm for the record that you'll comply with that requirement. Very good. Do we have anyone? We do have someone in the public that would like to speak. I can't quite read the last name, it's Philip. I need to get my progressives.
Silveira.
Thank you very much. Better eyesight than me, I need to get my progressives. I've reached that stage in my life. Alex, can you bring him? There we go, perfect, okay, great.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, this is Philip Silveira at 11 Maran Drive, Sergey's neighbor, and on the map, the, I guess, the lower left-hand quadrant property closer to the front of South Street.
Yes.
Can you?
Go ahead.
Can you help me understand what happened with the drainage plans and what's happening onto my property? I believe the original plan we saw was in a different part of the property, and I just want to understand what's happening there. I don't know what a burn, berm, whatever you said is, so I just want to understand what's going to happen when it rains and where, how that's impacting my property.
He's actually 14-foot below. So he's over here.
Mm-hmm.
So he's.
It's a roadway.
Yeah, there's a roadway, but you're, you're 14, you're about like 12 or 14 feet higher than the property, so you'll sit over the roadway, so everything will be below you. Yeah.
I'm right there, yeah. So was there a change in the plan or?
No, the only thing with the drainage plan, it, it just switched sides where we have the sewer easement, we combined the two easements to make less trenching and put the drainage to the other side of the property to help with Sergey's property.
So is it coming on to my property? That's what I'm trying to understand.
No, no, everything's, you're above our property, so you're 14 feet higher, we're, we're below you.
Got it, got it.
If that makes sense, so, yeah, you look down on.
You're at a higher elevation, he's at a lower elevation, and drainage easement is going away from your property.
Right.
Down in, kind of in an easterly direction, and then south far away from your property and Sergey's property.
Great, got it. One additional question, if I may. The, the proposed road in the circle, is the circle essentially over where the ticket house was? Or how much of the road split as proposed is over the current sort of driveway?
So it's basically right where that brick, that stone wall is at the end of the driveway is the edge of that road. So it's basically in that, yeah, vicinity right there. And I'm happy to meet you on site. If you want to walk through it, I can kind of point things out to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Otherwise, yeah, otherwise, we're looking forward to having you. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So you can reach out to attorney Janta to set that schedule up with, with Brian. George, you want to provide your phone number?
Sure. Yeah, the best way would probably be to either call or text me at 617-840-3570.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I was going to ask if we should, if you want to take Philip's phone number, but I guess that's fine as is. All right, is there anyone else on Zoom that'd like to chat about this or anyone in the room? I don't see anything. So at this point.
Mr. Chad, I just want, as Paul said, I just want to confirm, because one of the last meetings, we were talking about the trees and along. And I think there was comment of making sure which trees are coming down and what was being put up and where, and what was being, what was being replaced or how it was being replaced. I just want, and my apologies, I'm missing it, but what's happening with that?
So part of doing the changes we made to the grading and dropping the road down is we're able to save a couple of the larger trees. There are still a bunch because of the grading that has to be done. It's impossible to not remove a chunk of trees. But what we're gonna, this is the whole point of, we're taking those out, but then we're gonna have this, at a minimum, this 10-foot strip. It's gonna be, have trees and plantings in it, and then there'll be, there'll be other plantings as well. But, but that will help replace the trees that have to come out.
Do you have an updated landscaping plan?
Yeah, something like that.
Well, we don't, because you, so we have, some of the trees are located on the existing. But, you know, typically, we don't typically go and locate all the trees on a piece of property for subdivision. It's just not sort of standard. So even along South Street, I mean, I've handled a couple and I've, and I know several others. And, you know, we try and, any really significant, and I mean significant trees, we try and locate. But basically, sort of average trees don't typically get located. And although, you know, we like to, in general, you like to preserve trees as much as possible. The reality is, a lot of times with development, you have to take them out. So.
No, I understand, I can appreciate that. Trees are going to come out, we know that. But you're, 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 you're basically stating that we, that we, you don't have to show us anything because you're going to do the right thing. That's basically what you're saying. And I'm not meaning it as a criticism. Basically, that's what it's being said. It's not a criticism, just kind of, that's what it sounds like. What I'm saying is be nice if we actually saw what's coming up, that's all.
But there's a scenic road issue here.
Yeah, scenic road, yeah.
Yes.
So we do have, or at least along the scenic road, we do have whatever trees are being removed along the scenic road have to be approved. And am I remembering, because the meeting was so long ago, my memory is so bad these days.
We were talking about that.
There's some stone wall work also that's part of the scenic road application.
There is, there is more detailed information on along the front of the property, largely because of the Scenic Road Act aspect. So we have trees located and shown there, and we have identified the trees that have to come out. There are, like, most notably, there are two good-sized trees that are, one of them is like 60% in the layout of the road of South Street and 40% on the property, and like the other one, it's flipped, it's 60% on the property and 40%. They're basically right on the line of South Street. They have to come out because they're right where the driveway is going. Then there was another one that had to come out. But there's more information about that, in part because of the Scenic Road Act.
But it's not in these plans that you.
They were previously submitted.
Yeah.
You already have.
They're part of our, they're part of our materials from last December.
What you presented in the original hearing on the north side of the property on South Street, there's no change as a result of the regrading.
That's right. That's right. Because basically, the, the elevation at South Street stays the same. As it comes in, it's, it's, as you get into the property, that's where the change happens. And the stuff, the trees that we're talking about in the scenic road is right at the very front, right at the line of South Street. None of that changes.
But you, but you, but you did comment a few minutes ago that because of the elevation change, you're saving some trees that weren't going to be able to be saved before.
Right.
So, so you, so you, okay, okay, further, oh, further in, not near the road.
Exactly.
Okay.
So Lee, as a result of the Public Shade Tree Act and the Scenic Road, do we need an updated landscape plan that goes in 150 feet into the lot? Or that exceeds the limit of the act? Both acts?
The Scenic Roads Act is only covering what's in the right-of-way itself of South Street. And so what, I think what George is telling you is that, that that was being presented at the earlier hearing.
Right, and no further changes were made, yes.
There's, I believe what's being referred to is this plan, street opening sketch plan, lot two, that's accompanying the letter from Judge Janta of November 16, 2022. Unless there's something later, there's other plans, you know. But I, but I have a question too. The plan, the subdivision plans before us today show a 50-foot no disturbance area. But it's not clear, I mean, the road is going through that area, so obviously, it's going to be disturbed. There's no information on what is going to be saved in that 50-foot no disturbance area in the way of trees and vegetation.
Or replanted, as you said.
So, so basically, any trees that are in the, where the road is going have to come out, obviously. And I think you can see, I mean, it's tough to see, but if you look at the.
What page? Page five?
I'm just seeing which one, unfortunately, it might not. Yeah, actually, you can see it on the, the proposed grading plan. It's, it's tough to read it. It really is tough to read it. But on the proposed grading plan, you can see the faint underneath, the, the trees.
Yes.
Are shown underneath in a, in a lighter shit, sort of lighter line, right? And so you can kind of look at that and you can see that basically the trees that are in the, where that road, where the road, the road's coming in and where the grading is happening, that those have to come out. So where we've put it, we can, you know, there's a clump of trees there to the right of where the road's coming in that gets saved. But there are several trees that have to come out.
But 50-foot no disturbance area is represented by the dotted line and goes through the entire front of the property. As I'm looking at page four. And then obviously, as you said, the area that would be paved for the road, the trees that are in that area would have to be, be removed. So is, are you saying that every tree that's shown outside of the paved area will be preserved?
All the trees in the 50-foot no disturbance area that are outside the road and the grading will be preserved.
Outside the road and the grading.
And the grading.
Right.
So that's, that's north. So in the area.
West.
That's to the west of the road.
Right, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, the area that's, which is, it looks like you're showing grading there.
Yes.
Changes in grading there. So are all those trees coming out?
No, it looks.
From the road to the lot line?
So on this, I think, Alex, are you able to just?
It looks like there's four trees, maybe?
Yeah, these will all remain, but where the grading is in this area.
Yeah, but that's outside the 50-foot no disturb area.
Right, so then it would just be.
Well, some of them are in.
I think that's like four, plus the two that are in the.
There are four that are within that area.
Okay, so all those other beautiful trees that are to the west of the road and within the 50-foot no disturb area are going to remain.
Right.
Forgive my nevete, doesn't the 50-foot no disturbance area mean?
The disturb?
Well, as he said at the beginning, he can put a road through it. He has to be able to put the road through it. Otherwise, you can't have a driveway.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's, basically, it's, it's a part of the bylaw, and the bylaw essentially says you're supposed to leave it in the vegetated state, except.
When you put a driveway.
And one of them is subdivision roadway. So putting in a new roadway, you can do the work. And, and the bylaw doesn't specify sort of the limits, but logical, rational, I know it's legal documents, so probably logic and rationality should be included. But logically and rationally, you know, you would say, well, you're supposed to basically only take out trees that you reasonably have to to put your road in. So this is, you know, we basically, you can see, we've kind of keeping the grading to a minimum in the, in the 50-foot zone. There's only a little bit there that we have to do, so we're trying to preserve what we can and trying to keep. And by the way, the other thing, and you may remember this from the other hearing, we tried to keep the road as close to where the drive, the existing driveway was. But we couldn't keep it exactly just because of the configuration. But we tried to minimize the impacts. We're trying to do the right thing, trying to put it where it should go.
So shall we at this time then? I don't see, Lee, Alex, can you please bring back the Zoom just to see if we have?
I do have a question for Lee, and that is, okay, so there's the Scenic Roads Act and the tree. What is the mitigation that is supposed to occur if a tree is removed?
In, along the Scenic Roads Act?
Yes.
The Scenic Roads Act, I think it's two to one.
And so.
And we, we, we have, we already, I think you should have.
And I think Ed commented on that earlier, at the earlier meeting. I'm sorry, George.
Currently. And we had, we had committed to restoration. You should have the, that should be in the letter that you received back in November, December.
Where?
It's not in tonight's packet.
We did not renew the information you had from your earlier hearing. I'm beginning to think that in the future, we'll do that.
Yes, that would be helpful. It's been.
Yeah, it's too long a period of time, and people are, yes, I think you're, we're losing sight of what was submitted earlier.
I mean, lots of trees are coming, I mean, understandably so, lots of trees are coming out for this, but it's getting, getting wiped out, and I get, and I get that. And so the mitigation, I'm not sure if the, you know, where's the mitigation? Should the mitigation be back close to the scenic road range? Or is the mitigation, where are you going to plant trees anyway? These aren't trees on the property. There's wisdom, so where's the mitigation related to the Scenic Roads Act? Great, great, it's, it's, it's a great plan, it's going to, it's going to be a great thing, but that's our, that's our responsibility is to ask the questions, what's happening with the trees? And so what's happening with the trees? Where are they going?
So, so we're, we're, I think, I want to speak for Brian, but I think Brian's happy to plant, if you.
You're his lawyer, you're supposed to speak for him.
If, if, you know, I mean, generally, I think, certainly with the public shade trees, those are supposed to be, you know, in the layout, supposed to serve the public shade function. With respect to scenic road, I'm not sure that those go, you know, if there's a set, I'm not, I'm trying to remember all the, the scenic road hearings I've handled. And I don't know that it's actually been a, it's just been plant them, you know, kind of.
Lee, do you want to, do you want to speak to this?
It's, I think they've been planted within the right-of-way, and they've been, been planted outside of the right-of-way based upon the recommendations that we've gotten from Ed Olson, the tree warden, in terms of where he thought they would thrive best and what, and what species ought to be utilized.
And that's already been reviewed and approved by Ed, so now.
I believe Ed's comments and letters are in the earlier.
Yeah, they are.
I, I thought what I was checking with me to this meeting was the earlier packet, but I'm not finding it in there.
But I recall, I recall receiving, Lee has, Alex has it pulled up here. But he, Ed, Ed was present at the hearing. Yeah, so, and he gave testimony into the record.
Right. And we had met with him on site to review the trees that had to come out and discuss the, about replacing with, with two to one and.
Right, and the location.
Or, or, or making a donation to pay for trees in other locations.
Um, the, the hearing, let's see.
So we would otherwise, I think, take a motion to.
Is the date?
Close. Lee, would we have, could we close the hearing for the public shade tree? And the, I, I don't have it in front of me, just see, thank you, the scenic road hearing? And then close out the, close out the main hearing too?
Well.
No, are we going to keep the main hearing open to receive the comments from the public safety?
I think that maybe the best, I think we're, we're meeting next week. We, we had asked police and fire for their comments. We didn't get them. I would suggest that maybe we can just hold this hearing open and continue it till next Tuesday and get the comments from the police and fire and close the whole thing out at that time. We have a relatively short agenda, and we can schedule this. I think we have a request for an extension on 100 West Street, maybe allow 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for that and set this hearing for 7:10.
I would say.
So I move that we continue the here, that we continue both hearings.
All three hearings.
All three hearings. I move that we continue all three hearings to April 4th at 7:10.
Lee, before we take a second on that.
Yep.
We, we don't have to do one motion individually for each hearing, do we?
I think the way, the way Paul handled it was fine.
Okay, great.
As is usually the case.
Why doubt a lawyer?
Clearly, clearly you have a short-term memory, Paul.
So we have a motion to have a second?
Second, second.
A second by Gene. Any discussion? Hearing none. All come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. So we are, continue to next week at 7:10. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sergey, for coming. I appreciate that.
And to our staff, I, I don't see the communications with our tree warden, and I'd like it not to be sent around to us.
I don't believe that.
We had it written.
Gave us anything in writing. Instead, he attended our hearing and provided testimony.
So do you have the minutes?
Do we need something? What's going to happen, though?
I think that's up to you and Lee.
Lee?
I will follow up with Ed. I will review the minutes, and I will follow up with Ed, and I will get you either a minute or a formal memo from him, which documents what he's looking for and what his recommendations are. And I'll follow up with fire and police with the goal of getting the written record updated so that you can close this thing out and make, and, and next week Tuesday.
And thank you very much. And email's fine, as we've accepted that from the public safety. Fred Olson, that's fine.
That's fine.
Thank you very much. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Good to see you. We'll see you next week.
Yeah, exactly.
Forward to it. Thank you.
We're getting closer, we're getting closer. Good work in your collaboration. Thank you very kindly. All right, this brings us to the next item on our agenda, which, which is the A&R Plan for Zero Charles by the petitioner Northland Residential Corporation. However, we do have in our packet a notice by the petitioner to withdraw the application without prejudice. And so I would take a motion to withdraw without prejudice the, the, the A&R Plan.
I move that we approve the withdrawal without prejudice of the A&R Plan for the property located at Zero Charles River Street, tax map 304, lots four and five.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, does anybody have any idea of why it's being withdrawn?
No, I do not.
No.
Okay, all right, so all we can do is vote, all right.
Also, when you say without prejudice, I guess.
That, that means that they can bring another.
Right, okay, I just wanted to confirm that, yeah. Are there some that are with prejudice?
If it was with prejudice, then they're out of.
They're out completely. Okay, I just wanted to confirm.
That's right.
Actually, no, okay.
That's what it means.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The ayes have it unanimously. Lee, we don't need any further motion on that, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the zoning article assignments, oh, assignments for town meeting. So, well, this is fun because tomorrow, or not tomorrow, next week could be my last, could be my last hearing, my last meeting.
So I think it's premature. I don't think we should be discussing this until after the election.
All right.
I agree.
Okay, all right.
Because we may be having Rob.
Exactly.
Present everything. Present everything.
That works, that works so well.
Jump into the fire, jump into the fire.
Exactly.
So put that on April 25th meeting.
And then, and Rob, it's, for the record, that's fine. There's only four and they're not controversial at all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's no, no part of any of it, especially the ADU, there's no controversy at all. It'll fly right through.
So next up on our agenda are the minutes for December 19, December 22, and January 3rd. And I didn't print them out, I have them online, but you have these.
I have them printed out.
We seem to do well together.
There are a few on the, on December 19th, just a few questions I had.
Yes.
On the first thing, on the public hearing of Belfort, this is above 100 West Street. And it says in the second paragraph below the hearing notice, the applicant will contribute 1.9 million to the Affordable Trust Fund. I never understood that that was the deal.
It was. They were going to, they were going to.
They were going to contribute 1.9 million to the town.
Oh, yes.
But it was not intended.
Specifically.
In fact, that was quite a controversy. People thought it should be contributed to the affordable housing.
Right.
But they never agreed to that as far as I know.
So I think the, that's right, and that's right. So.
Actually, I think it was the select board that didn't.
They didn't want it that way.
Didn't want it that way.
Might have liked it.
So.
So should it just say to the town?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Let's see if there's any other questions. Yeah, page four. Now we're talking about public, tonight, oh, this, now we're talking about 920 South Street, which we just, we're talking about. In, after it says voted to waive the reading, and then this paragraph, the second paragraph on page four, Mr. Johnson noted to, that's proposed. And then it says, the, the way it's worded, it says the bylaw calls for a 50-foot road. I think it's, somebody may have said bylaw, but it's the subdivision rules and regulations. So should that be changed? Just to be clear, even if the person may have mistakenly said bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And again, in now, in Mr. Alpert, the fourth paragraph asks why, why show 40 feet and not 50 feet when the bylaw says? Should we just say rules say?
Yes.
Where it's clearly referenced above to the rules. Then, then on the next page, page five, I think the, on the third paragraph, I think the name of the road is Burr, B-U-R-R, not Bird? Is that what we're talking about? Burr Drive?
Yes, Burr Road.
Okay, so that, that should be changed because it actually is Burr Drive. So that's it as far as questions on the minutes of December 19th. And then I made a few changes of typing and.
Sure.
Whatever.
And then on December 22nd?
Do we want to?
Let's throw it on.
I was going to do it all at once, but okay.
So I move that we approve the minutes of December 19th, 2022, with the changes that were discussed this evening.
Any, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Gene. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Next comes the minutes for December 22.
Yes.
Funny in her packet, I don't know.
Right after. Right. Lee, I think, Lee, I think somebody actually sent or revised December 22nd. But what I have before me on page two.
It's crossed out.
It has, a motion was made to grant and then.
Everything was deleted.
That's all crossed out. Oh, yeah, this is the revised. This is revised. So this is, this is fine with the.
Redline.
I took out a sentence on the first page because it really wasn't clear and it was my own speaking. That may soften enough if construction is delayed.
We're fine, we're fine, Gene.
We just took it out. All right. And so I think otherwise, as worded, would be, would the change is shown.
So can I have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve the minutes of December 22nd as revised, second by Paul Alpert. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Now comes the minutes of January 3rd.
Yes. January 3rd, in the second paragraph, it's quote, Mr. Block has quoted as saying, this meeting does not include any public hearings and public comment will be allowed.
Will not be allowed.
I think it's supposed to be a not in there, okay? Then in below, with regard, regard to 888 Great Plains Avenue discussion in the third paragraph, then Mr. Johnson Jr. is quoted as saying, the applicant wants the 12.5% affordable cap lifted. And I'm not sure what he means by that. Did he say that?
I think he did. I thought, if I remember correctly, Lee, that.
Does he mean lifted means it should be higher? 12.5%?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, increase.
Okay, then we'll leave it alone as it is.
Or do you want to change it to increase?
Increase is clear.
Clear.
Okay, increase. Because lifted could mean he just wants it eliminated.
Yeah.
Just, just to go back to the previous comment, I think we might say will instead of will not be allowed because there is, we did allow, I think I see further in the meeting, Joseph Leghorn made, made a comment. Oscar Mertz also spoke.
Do we want to say but public comment will be allowed?
Sure, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And so it changed to increased.
And then the next one, that's right.
And the next one is Cox Building.
Cox Building, yeah, that should be Cox. Yes.
Okay.
Both references.
Both references should be Cox Building. Then at the bottom of page two, Mrs. Spada is quoted as saying, Ms. Spada asked if there would be a connection to the backside like urban. That's not clear. Should it just end with backside?
Sure. I would say so.
I don't know what like urban means.
We were talking, I think, about MBT, 888 Great Plains.
Yeah.
This is, as I mentioned, the setbacks in amount of, she asked there is a fence around the property. Mr. Johnson said there was a fence along the right side. Now, there's no fence on the left of the back.
I would say the backside of the property maybe, right?
Yeah, that's right.
To the backside.
Backside of the property.
Of the property, okay.
Yeah. It probably did say to create an urban condition, but, I mean, we don't need to say that, just if it's just a question, does it come to the backside of the property?
The next one is on page.
On page three. The apartment A, in the second paragraph, Mr. Block, he feels, doesn't agree with, the apartment A one challenge is it is point five.
FAR.
FAR.
Strikeout pre-suburban.
Okay. Right, okay. All right. So that takes care of page three. Page four, no question. Page five, no question. Okay, that's it.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of January 3?
With the changes discussed this evening.
Perfect motion. A second?
Second.
Second by Natasha, motion by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes carry unanimously. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a report from our planning staff and planning board members. One thing that I'll note is we have a note from the Attorney General, Andrea Campbell's office, relating to the affirmative obligations for the MBTA Communities Act, which I think was giving clarity because I think municipalities have been opting out of the MBTA communities. And I think she was saying that it's more than just a penalty that you would not be able to qualify for certain funding. The penalty was more, it was actually a.
Well, it was a threat. I read, that really comes under correspondence, but that's okay.
Well, I think it was, Lee, did you want to speak to it? Is that why it was on that section of our packet?
No, I, I don't, I don't know why it was in that section of your packet, but it wasn't put there for any particular reason.
Okay.
But I have.
Yes.
If we may speak to it, I agree with Paul that this is a threat. And it was presented that way when, when, when this was an article in, in the Boston Globe too, last week. It's, it is not helpful.
No.
Not helpful.
Not helpful at all.
When we're working toward this goal, we generally seem to have the support of the town. And part of it is that people in this town want to do the right thing. And that's what's motivating us. And to be threatened like this, I think is only harmful. It will make people get their backs up.
And I think she's wrong, by the way.
She is wrong. And I, I agree with you there. There's a real question of whether she's completely wrong.
I haven't, I haven't looked at the statutes that, that she cites, but she's basically accusing those towns that choose to not follow the MBTA zone as, as, as deliberately being discriminatory.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, as Gene just said, that's not helpful.
Yeah.
Well.
Now, Needham happens to be, our housing committee happens to be in favor of going along with it.
And the select board and the planning board.
Well.
Voted.
Voted to, you know, I happen to have one problem with it, which is that I really wish that it, that it would be by special permit instead of as of right, but, you know, I was outvoted. And, and so for me to read that where, you know, I just have one problem with the statute as drafted and she's accusing me of being discriminatory.
Do you think that we should respond to this letter?
No. I think, I think we carry on with the work of the board. It's, I, I will say that with respect to compliance, that's one element, but I would probably recommend a higher level of, a greater number of units per acre to actually create, achieve the goals set out, but that's a discussion down the road. I think that, you know, we, you're going to, we're going to work up a plan pretty soon to get into the next steps, to devise a plan so that for town meeting next year, you know, we've passed the zoning bylaw to achieve those goals, right? So we need to come up with a schedule.
That's correct. And that's what you and I talked about today. And I think also, after the election, we're going to set up a meeting, a chair, vice chair meeting between the planning board and the select board to talk about that schedule and the creation of a committee that would be dedicated to overseeing that work, working with the consultant, working with the planning staff in a process, you know, similar to what we did with the Affordable Housing Plan. That would have a broad, you know, constituency of members that would oversee the work and would manage, would manage the, the planning effort.
Right. So I'd like us to, you know, to map, to come up with a, a schedule and write it down and kind of post it on our site for MBTA compliance and have a, you know, like a webpage for that that lays out the schedule, working back from, you know, May to town meeting for 2024, you know, all the way through to now, the things that we need to do and by when, at least the core anchors.
Yeah, that, that, that's what, what I, what I think we're going to be, be meeting with the select board to talk about.
Right.
And putting a proposal to do it. And so once we, there's an agreement on that schedule and how things should shape out, certainly we'll post it on our website so everybody's aware.
Great. I, I look forward to that. So then the next thing I saw in our, in our packet was a notice from Dover, the town of Dover, with respect to a hearings they were having to amend their zoning bylaws to allow for ADUs attached and detached, and also a notice to amend their bylaw, I think with respect to flood plains. So it's good to see other communities that are acting, you know, in sync. Lee, did you want to speak to anything?
Well, I just wanted to tell the board that tomorrow night, you and I are going to the finance committee to present or ask any, answer any questions that they have on our, on the planning board's zoning proposal. I think unlike in past years, the schedule is such that the finance committee is trying to actually get their written recommendations into the warrant. So I anticipate Adam, if they vote on the zoning articles, that their recommendation will actually show up in the warrant this year, which is unlike the past where under zoning was normally a no recommendation from the finance committee as, as it was done in the warrant. And we're also going to be, I think, answering questions on the small repair grant program, which is the program we've asked for to be refunded again, I think at a $50,000 level. So Adam is going to be at that meeting, I'm going to be at that meeting, I think Karen Sonnaborg from the, the housing specialist is going to be at that meeting. I think Gene has a prior commitment with CPC, and so hopefully we'll, we'll get their support on our four zoning articles.
And I expect that, you know, questions to come from FinCom on, you know, the impact of ADUs, especially when relating to detached and also detached, but both with respect to renting, leasing.
Well, I think the evidence from the other towns has been that there aren't that many of these that are actually permitted and that there's.
That's anecdotal. I'm, we need, I would like to have specific information.
Well, we have specific information on numbers. Well, we have specific information from towns. I think Karen, I, I shared that with you. Karen Sonnaborg contacted the, the towns that were on Oscars.
Right. I respond, I responded, I didn't see a specific number, that, since in those towns, how many were created, ones, you know, that were either detached and/or that, you know, were leasing.
There, that these towns are not managing the data that way. Their planning staffs are not going back into their history of permits when we call and ask them for that. That's research that is pretty, is a, is a pretty strong ask. So what they were able to share with us was information on what the volume was, and the volume is very low. So how that low volume is, you know, a portion between those different components, I don't think we have an exact answer, but the volumes are low. I mean, if, if the town, that level of detail, then we can revisit it with these towns, but it's, it's a lot of ask to ask another community to research their permitting history and to go into the details of their permits to give you those kinds of numbers.
Now, we, we would, we would have though, the bylaws as far as what the setbacks are, correct? We'll have those. Right here.
Well, you'd, you'd have their.
Not on the hand.
What's that? I mean, we're getting, we're getting information about their acceptance of detached, so we need an understanding of their acceptance of setbacks.
You mean from the finance committee?
No, no, from, if we're, right now, I thought we were talking about the other towns.
No, no, we're talking, what we're, what I'm talking about specifically is tomorrow night, Lee and I are going to go to FinCom to talk about all four of these zoning amendments. I anticipate a question coming up from FinCom on what are the impacts? Lee is, Lee is saying that we can't really get from all the, from all of the municipalities, you know, specific numbers on how many per. Do you get that, Arnie? numbers on how many per, do you get that, Artie? She's just saying that generally speaking, it's low, and we're probably not gonna get more specific information. So, uh, that might be because, there's three might be because, um, uh, you know, uh.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right.
You didn't, uh, support the motion, so you don't need to. So, all right. Um, and are there any impacts about the three-car garage, except that it's, reduces the amount of time for the homeowner and the cost, and also for the, you know, the burden for this, uh, the ZBA? Um, beyond that, I don't know that there's.
I don't know that there's any fiscal.
A mere empirical fiscal impact.
There's no fiscal impact to the town.
Yeah, maybe some reduced staff time in the planning department.
Right, exactly.
For handling the permits.
Exactly. So, uh, Lee, was there anything else for reports?
I know that was, that was what I was gonna report on, that and the MBTA communities work.
Jean, did you want to report on anything?
Yes, yes, I did. Um, noted in the select board's agenda packet, um, that there is a hearing that was going on this evening on a proposed community stormwater mitigation assessment plan. Um, and I just printed out the cover sheet. Um, let me pass it along to, to all of you. Um, and I think that this is a very positive, if you want to pass it into Alex, she knows what we're talking about.
I got it on screen here.
And, um.
Thank you very much.
I think this is a very positive, uh, proposal. Um, and, um, I wonder if our board will want to, um, obviously we couldn't be at the hearing tonight, um, but would want to send any kind of communication in support of this proposal. I would like to, but if others.
I certainly don't have any opposition. Uh, what would be the reason to provide our, that our support?
Um, just to indicate, since, um, stormwater is an issue that our board often deals with in our planning, um, in our approval of subdivisions, in our approval of developments, that we think that, um, addressing the stormwater issue in the town by having a fund, that this, um, assessment would contribute money to the fund, I mean, not, would be required to pay money to the fund, depending on the number of square feet of impervious surface that exists on the property, is a positive thing. And that for a rather small situation like this, you know, a single-family home and a small lot, we're talking about adding $38 to the annual tax. Um, but when you're talking about very large, um, developments, a lot of surface square footage, um, you like Coca-Cola, as I, I mean, I read, I did read the materials, and the Coca-Cola, um, property is the largest in terms of.
Water use?
Of, um, stormwater, of paved area and paved buildings.
Right.
Right.
So there were other materials that were.
Yes, it was a PowerPoint presentation and so forth.
I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable voting on something that I haven't seen and haven't been able, been able to.
Yeah, the only, only, yeah, the only, I mean, I understand what they're trying to do, but then, I don't know, I don't know in totality what this means as far as it means they'll be able to do more if they pay the, pay the fee. Want to do more if they don't pay the fee.
If you would like us to consider it, well, next week, I'll tell you, this is, this is a very, this is tax season, this is a very busy time.
Yeah.
For me, I mean, if you want to bring this up at the April 25th meeting.
Might be a little late.
Yeah.
You could, you could on your, you could on your own.
I could, I can, instead tomorrow, I can, um, uh, make a scan of the whole thing and send it to you.
Yeah, I, I, I just don't know if I have time.
An alternative.
Fifteen pages with PowerPoint, you know.
Jean, an alternative is, you could, you know, relate your own position.
Clearly, the select board is not looking for our vote.
They didn't ask for it, no.
No, no, they, they didn't ask for it, so.
Okay, well, just.
They're gonna do what they're gonna do anyway.
Thank you very much for this.
Let me, let me instead report that the select board is considering this very helpful program.
That program is helpful, and it's, and as the planning board, that in many ways manages stormwater mitigation programs, we recognize the importance and the value of, you know, uh, the town working collaboratively on all forms of stormwater management mitigation.
Yes.
Is that reasonable for the record?
Reasonable for the minutes or for the record?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, very good, perfectly right.
All right. Um, uh, so.
It was Dedham as well. You mentioned Dover.
Oh, I missed this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's, it's about electric vehicle charging stations, but also on, uh, overlay district for multi-family.
So we also have a notice of a public hearing, uh, for this past Wednesday, March 22nd, um, from the, uh, town of Dedham relating to electric vehicle charging stations and, um, multi-family housing overlay district, were noticed as in the budding town. Um, Lee, I'd like to add to our list of planning priorities, in particular for climate action, uh, to allow for electric vehicle charging stations. And then also on a related matter, I am asking, uh, Stephen Frail to come from the Climate Action Planning Committee for next, uh, for our next meeting, uh, next week. Uh, he'll chat about the meeting that, you know, had recently happened. And I was very glad to hear that, you know, it included our building commissioner and our town engineer, uh, so we can start to sketch together some specific, um, as, uh, climate smart zoning for October, and then also to start the schedule for May town meeting next year for some additional programs. So I'm excited to see, I'm excited to have Stephen in and to, you know, to start taking up the work that you guys did and actually creating some real meaningful change from it. So that's awesome.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've actually officially voted what we want to start to bring forward. I mean, we were going to, I assume, but I don't know if we've actually officially voted what we want to bring forward.
We put the list together with the top three items.
Yeah.
Yeah, include that included.
Yeah, yeah.
You mean as a CAPC?
Yeah, as, as, yeah, we haven't actually officially voted.
Right, we created a matrix with the top three for each group. There were six groups, I think.
Exactly, which will be great. So it'll, you guys will have the chance to report in, and, uh, and so will he. And, uh, you know, I'm excited about that. Um, uh, thanks, Artie, for the clarification. Um, so additional correspondence we received for the record, an email dated March 11 from Scott, we don't know his last name, an email dated March 12, uh, from Meredith Freed of 136 Stratford Road, an email dated March 12 from Ellen Cantor of Locust Lane, an email dated March 13 from Lori and Steve Spitz, an email dated March 13 from, uh, Rachel, uh, Chituv, 57 Walker Lane, an email dated March 13 from Andrea Danenberg, an email dated March 13 from Sean and Maria Morris of 48 Scott Road, an email dated March 13 from Ricky Nickel, email dated March 14 from Joe Abruzzi's. Um, and then I can't remember if we, did I identify the correspondence we received from the Y, uh, which was relating to the farmer's market for the use of the bathroom?
We did.
And then, we, I know we did that. And then was there another one that I missed from today, Alex?
I don't know.
No, the other one from today was, was the, um, was, was the, was Charles, Charles River Street A and R Plan.
Yes, it was the notice of withdrawal.
Yeah.
Yes. Thanks. So we did do that. Uh, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I add a couple of things?
Yeah.
Just, sorry to, one is, um, the, the housing working group I know was disbanded or was concluded, right? And we voted on that. But Laura Dorfman asked us if we were doing anything about housing preservation. And, you know, looking at what, that's one of the categories that we had. One of the things that we did is we went to the, um, housing trust, um.
Affordable affordability or?
No, 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 we, we went.
Affordable housing trust.
Affordable housing trust. And we know that there are things that they, we recommended that there were things that they should take on. There are things that the planning board should take on. And I think we should review it because there's no accountability right now because there's no one, the town hasn't hired anyone to kind of review, you know, the action items. So one of the things that I had been doing was going through all the recommendations to say which ones we recommend the housing trust, um, affordable housing trust take on, what we would take on. And, um, I think one of the things we talked about was anything related to zoning and, and related to, um, housing preservation and other things. She brought up the, the thought of, you know, they're considering ways to save more historical homes in Needham and identifying them. And should we talk with the larger group? But the group is disbanded. So maybe for the next meeting, if I can, maybe not for next week, but the following one, I can put together the list and say these were the things that we think that this group for right now should move forward until there's better, a better idea of how this is, you know, in general for the town, how it's gonna move forward.
On preservation or on all?
On, on all of them, including this one. So if this is something that's within, uh, you're within our purview, because there were some planning board purviews and there were some housing, you know, housing trusts. I just wanna, I don't want things to fall through the cracks. And if they're, they're trying to do some things that are related to zoning and want to talk to us about it, I don't.
I think there's some, similar to what Lee was saying, uh, would be done after the joint meet, uh, chair, vice chair meeting?
No, I was talking, I was talking really about, um, the MBTA Communities Act, and we were, well, but certainly, 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 this could be, could be discussed, I think, at that chair, vice chair meeting. But I was speaking specifically about our obligations under the MBTA Communities Act, you know, creating a special committee to work on that work and creating a, a work plan, um, and the hiring of consultants to secure its implementation over the course of the next year.
And there are a lot of pieces that go under that, under the MBTA Hou, uh, communities. So, but there are other things that we, we had mentioned that are not, and they're just gonna be in limbo unless we figure out which is moving forward with it. So.
Natasha, when you say preservation, are you specifically talking about houses which may fall under historic, or ways to preserve more, more houses, more, more medium-sized homes? So, so for example, we go and look at Wellesley's plan that they've implemented for large housing studies. These, we had one for, was it?
There's a current demo delay bylaw, which they believe is not strong enough to save the homes. So it's just kind of just hearing what they, what they're thinking about.
Yeah, I think the demo delay, would that be more related to a historical, the demo delay?
Well, Newton has, Newton has an automatic 12 months.
Well, yeah, no, it's what I'm saying, we, the town has, we have, we have a delay.
I don't know enough about it, right.
But I think it's related to some pro, potentially historical.
Our demolition delay bylaw, six months is related to, uh, identify historic.
Historic houses.
And, uh, and other towns have a year delay.
Right.
And, and so maybe it's.
It's in the discretion of the historic commission. So when there's a tear down.
Right.
Yes.
So the historic commission is saying we want to review these things that are related to zoning and related to bylaws, and which, you know, should it be through the housing working group? Well, the housing working group doesn't exist anymore. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, what.
Yeah, we, you know, we, we, I think we talked earlier today about another, you know, another group that would pick up a number of these housing items. I certainly want to add a number of housing items to our planning priorities for the board. Um, you know, this is certainly one of them. My, the one note that I'll make, just because of my own experience in real estate, is that having a demolition delay, whether it's a history, historical commission delay or an automatic delay, only delays the problem. It slows down the tear down, but it doesn't itself, um.
discourage.
But it does, but it, what, the, the issue is not, I don't think, one of, um, a tear down. And I say that because we have 8,000 single-family homes in town, and we turn over about, uh, maybe 100 or a little bit more a year, and then in some years it's less. So that's 1.25%. That is certainly well within industry norms of, and I think geographic norms of turnover. The problem is that we're taking down 2,000 square foot homes, replacing them with 5,000 square foot homes or larger on, in particular, small lots. And I, you know, having, having a delay on that, uh, doesn't have an impact on what's actually replaced. And so, you know, it's something that.
That's why perhaps it's time to revisit the, uh, you know, large housing study committee and revisit what, what perhaps happens there. Because, well, other towns have done it, and it seems to be fairly successful. And it doesn't seem, and it doesn't really seem to have any negative impact to the builders, but it has a positive impact for the community.
I, I think we should just go through what, what all the.
The options are.
No, what the list is in general of all the different actionable items.
Yes.
See which group is taking it on, making sure that, that we're not losing any of the information that we put together. And then going, just figuring out the priorities.
I agree. And who's gonna do what?
There's some like low hanging fruit. And then there's some things like the big house, which is gonna take, it took two years to glass down. So, and DeRoches was in my zoning group on CFC, and he mentioned, and I think Jean was on it, right?
So one, one other thought that I had.
Original one, yes.
The original one. So I think what I, what I'm trying to bring up is that we, we should revisit how the housing group recommendations move forward, since there's no one kind of leading it right now.
I'm curious about one of the, uh, recommendations that came out of the Housing Plan Working Group about the town engaging, uh, you know, a housing coordinator, uh, because there are a number of housing issues that are gonna be complicated to lead through over the next three years, uh, for implementation on a whole wide range of things. But of course, if, you know, we're talking about, you know, a budget for 2020, for the next year, which would be for the following year. So we'd really wouldn't have the person in there probably for another 18 months or so. And by then, we've already have, you know, well passed into the action items here. So something that, you know, to think about. But unless there's anything else, uh, I would entertain a motion.
One more thing, because I wanted to, and that's it. And I promise this will be really quick. It's good news. It's gonna, I just heard that I was selected as one of the 2023, what is it, most 50 most influential business leaders of color in the Charles River Metro West region?
Awesome.
So someone nominated me. So if it's any of you, thank you. I mean, somebody in our community probably did so. Anyway, I wanted.
I thought about nominating you, but I didn't know if your business was in the area.
It is, it's in Needham. So, um, I, I was, I was selected in 2021, and then I'm not sure they did it last year, but maybe they did. I was selected again this year.
Congratulations.
Well, the list you proposed together would be very helpful that you just spoke on.
Agreed.
That's it. I promise I'm done.
Move to adjourn?
Why are you looking at me?
So moved.
I don't know, because it seemed like you.
Because he wants it adjourned again. I mean, it could be like, one more thing?
I think I seconded that, Paul. I could have, when you heard you say something.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing now will come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.